Yeah.
Oh, boy. Things going again.
We've had and called this meeting to order June sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, all. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. First up is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, we did remove the Richard Stem presentation on the Ashley National Forest Potential Collaborative. There was a conflict there. Uh, so we'll push that back for a later meeting, and then we do need to add an executive session for legal. We already have one for Personnel and Real Estate, but I would ask that we add legal and entertain a motion to approve as amended. So moved motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Sheenfield on favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. First up under tab A, we have a public hearing, uh, three of them today. For three different budget resolutions, first being Resolution twenty-three oh six oh one for the IT Department. We've got Bonnie with us here this morning. Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. We do have three budget amendments this morning. The first one is Resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash C L dash zero one. This is a Sweetwater County Budget Amendment to increase the expenditures in the General Fund in the IT Department operating budget in the amount of six thousand. We will be decreasing the expenditures in the General Fund, IT Department salaries and benefits. And for six, six thousand dollars also. So we're moving six, six thousand dollars from the IT salaries and benefits into the IT Department operating budget. Tim is here to answer any questions you might have on that. Um, but just a reminder that you do need to open this up to the public before it can be voted on. Are there any questions? And I'll let Tim answer them if you do have any.
Questions for Tim or Bonnie, Commissioners? Doesn't look like it. Thanks for the background. Uh, at this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing on Resolution twenty-three oh six C L oh one. Budget amendment for the IT Department. If there's anyone online, since there's none in the audience that would like to speak to this issue. Now is the appropriate time. Seeing our hearing none, and we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash C L dash zero one, a budget. Sweetwater County Budget Amendment.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Tillman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Welcome back.
Thank you. Second budget resolution is Resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash C L dash zero two. This is a Sweetwater County Budget Amendment to increase the expenditures in the county road fund fuel tax in the amount of two million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. And to decrease the reserves in the county road fund fuel tax, two million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. So we're moving, we're moving two million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars from reserves in that um, county road fund fuel tax. So it's not out of the general fund into the expenditure. Um, in, into the expenditure budget for the county road fund fuel tax. Um, this is outside of the general fund. Um, this is a budget that Jean is over. Jean could not be here today, so um, he let me know what this was for, so I could let you know. Um, he said that uh, the last five overlay projects have been bid by Lewis and Lewis, and they always do the work in August or September. So this year, due to their paving schedule, they will complete the entire project in June, but Jean had only budgeted a portion of that project to be completed this year. Um, in case they did get an early start. So this is to cover the remainder of the project with the exception of retainage. So that is the reason for the budget amendment. But just to let, just to remind you, this is not increasing the general fund. Uh, it's not pulling money out of the reserves from the general fund. So are there any additional questions on this before this one's opened up to the public?
It's Bonnie. Questions, Commissioners? Seems pretty straightforward. Appreciate the explanation. Um, with no questions, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Resolution twenty-three zero six C L oh two, County Road Fund Fuel Tax Budget Amendment. Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this amendment? If so, now would be the appropriate time. Hearing done, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and Commissioners and entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three oh six C L oh two.
Mister Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash C L dash zero two for the County Road Fund in the amount of two million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheenfield. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. And the final budget amendment. Turn it back to Bonnie.
Thank you. Last one for today. Resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash C L dash zero three is a Sweetwater County Budget Amendment. This increases the total expenditures um, in the budget for Sweetwater County District Board of Health. Um, it increases the expenditures by one hundred and twenty thousand um, to increase the total expenditure budget for the Sweetwater County District Board of Health. Um, up to two million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. And um, Kim Lionberger is on Zoom, and she would be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this before you open up to the public.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Richards.
Is, so this is not coming out of our reserves. This is within their department. They're pulling
That is correct.
Thousand dollars out of their current.
That is correct. This is not coming out of reserves. It is not coming out of the general fund. Um, this is just due to Wyoming State Statute sixteen dash four dash one, one, one. Um, which requires the Board of County Commissioners to authorize any departure from the adopted budget for any boards that are appointed by the Commissioners. So yes, thank you for bringing that up because that is important to make clear to the public that this is not increasing um, the general fund budget and is not coming out of reserves also that is, this is just in a total overall expenditure increase um, for the Sweetwater County District Board of Health expenditure budget.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yes, uh, Miss Lionberger, maybe you could explain what, what you're going to use it for?
Um, good morning, Commissioners. The increase to the expenditures, um, we had a fourteen percent increase in the uh, benefits. Like, uh, we budgeted for not a fourteen percent when this, the HR department lets us know how much to plan for increase to those. Um, so it's over in that. Um, we bought significantly more vaccine this last fiscal year than the previous fiscal year, and so that was also um, attributes to the increase in the expenses. So it's benefits for employees that increased it by more than projected and then um, salary or vaccine.
Thank you.
Yep.
You also had a payback in there too. Is that right, Kim?
Yeah, we did have to pay the um, uh, state of Wyoming during COVID. They overpaid us for case management, and then we had to return that thirty-three thousand back to the state.
Any other questions for Kim, Commissioners? Thanks for being here this morning, Kim. Uh, with that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing for Resolution twenty-three zero six C L oh three, Sweetwater County District Board of Health Budget Amendment. Is there anyone? Doesn't look like there is, but I'll ask anyway, online or in the public that would like to speak to this budget amendment. Now would be the appropriate time. Hearing and seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Uh, pleasure on Resolution twenty-three zero six C L oh three?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Sheenfield.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash C L dash zero three.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sheenfield. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Bonnie. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kim. Moving along in the agenda, next up, we have county resident comments and concerns. At this time, it would be appropriate if there's anyone in the audience or online, even though there's not that would like to address the governing body. Now is your time. Seeing and hearing none, we will go ahead and move right along to tab B, the consent agenda. Before us today are five uh, items. The approval of the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. The approval of county vouchers, warrants, EALs, and a new addition, uh, this packet, which is the Commissioners' report for June sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Appreciate that being included. I think that's a good sign of uh, transparency. The approval of bonds, approval of abates and rebates. And re, uh, request to restock a vacant position in the custodial department. Commissioners, if you've had a chance to review these items, and there are no other questions.
Mister Chairman.
What's your pleasure? Commissioner Richards?
I've moved to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheenfield. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Slowing down from a minute recorder over there. Next up on the agenda is Commissioner Comments, and Commissioner Richards, you're up first.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, fellow Commissioners. On May twenty-second, I attended the combined communications meeting and then headed to Douglas, where I spent a fun-filled week at the Spring County Commissioners Association meeting, which included yet another Federal Natural Resource Partners Day. So I got to listen to federal partners make reports about what their agencies do for the third time in about a month. So thank you all for skipping that and letting me take the bullet on that one. You're all more than welcome. Um, I will say that the presentation from Cam Shawley, the Superintendent of Yellowstone National Park, was very interesting. Uh, if you ever get the chance to hear him speak or visit with him, I, I recommend you take it. He talked a lot about the flooding that happened in the park last year and how much you can accomplish when you can get the stakeholders to cut the red tape and let you pull your, let you pull your sleeves up and get the work done. Uh, there were a lot of items we covered during the week, and I won't bore you with all of them. I'm sure you had copies of the agenda, so if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. There are a few items that I want to touch on though, and a couple of them concern potential cost to us. The first is our yearly dues to the organization, which are assessed based on a formula that takes into account population, assessed value, sales tax, built, and direct distribution. The initial statewide dues they are assessing is based on the same four hundred and seventy-five thousand statewide that they collected last year, with our share of that being seven point one three percent, or thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's four hundred and twenty-six less than last year's dues. However, there is a proposal to also assess an additional four hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the member counties for the purpose of paying off the building loan for the organization's offices in Cheyenne. The reasoning is that while they have thirteen years left on the building loan, the interest rate will adjust in two years, and everyone expects the rate to more than double when that happens. That would assess Sweetwater County with a one-time additional assessment of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars based on the same distribution formula used for regular dues. Current discussion was that the additional assessment could be split over two years to help counties budget for it more effectively. The whole thing was pitched as a way to reduce future dues because if we no longer had debt service to pay, we could reduce our overall budget in the future. Um, I opposed making the decision at the meeting because I definitely did not feel it was appropriate for me as the lone member from Sutter County to decide something like that on my own. Um, that would have a, a thirty-five thousand dollar impact on our budget without hearing from the rest of you. I was clear that if they brought it to a vote then, then I'd be a vote against. Um, and I was backed up by a lot of other members with that. Uh, I thought it was more appropriate to allow the counties to talk about it first. Um, I believe they're planning to have a board meeting later this month to make the final decision, and that will be Chairman West's responsibility to cast our vote. So I wanted to let you know what the discussion was, so you can each let him know what your feelings are on it. Uh, the second item that came up is a plan from NACO and W I R to create what they call the National Center for Public Lands Counties. The purpose of the center would be to lobby on behalf of counties with public lands to keep their tilt money flowing, as well as other public land derived revenues intact, and to generally act as an advocacy group to provide expertise on public land issues. Backstory here is that Mayor Bloomberg donated a hundred and fifty million to create a similar center at Harvard that will work on behalf of cities. And the idea is to create a balancing force to work on the behalf of public land counties. Catch is they need money to do it, and how they want to fund it is through a voluntary assessment from public cla- land counties like ours, based on an amount equal to one percent of the ARPA money that counties received with the argument that they believe NACO is heavily responsible for, you know, procuring that money for us. In our case, we received seven million, seven point three eight million and change. So they're asking that we voluntarily fund them an amount equal to one percent of that, which would be seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars currently. Carbon County and Park County have pledged their one percent amounts to, to start it off. They're claiming every county in Arizona and a bunch in Utah and, and around the country have, have pledged money. That money would go into a trust or an endowment to permanently fund the center. Again, that one would be a voluntary assessment, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, whether, or whether or not that's something we should do. I'm just passing on the information. That's a bigger discussion we all need to take part in. I left a handout that came with each of you from the WCCA that is kind of a sales pitch from them on what they believe the value of our membership is and what the return on our dues, dues are. Uh, on another note, I was appointed to the Energy and Environment Committee, so I'll be doing some work there on behalf of the county. Uh, moving on from the WCCA, Chairman West and I met with Dave Mead on the thirty-first to discuss some ideas to spruce up our meeting room. As you may remember, when he was presenting his budget in May, I mentioned that putting an exhibit of historical photos in here from the museum might be a good idea to get some relief from these stark white walls. Chairman West suggested an exhibit recognizing the industries that built Sutter County, like oil, natural gas, coal, and trona, and also agricultural industries like sheep and cattle grazing. We thought exhibits printed on metal would look good, but those ones out there on acrylic look really good too. And Dave is going to bring some sa- sampler too and leave them in the room behind us so he can see what they look like. Our initial thought was to hang thirty-six inch wide prints between each of the windows. Um, in here with a twelve-foot panorama over here on our, on our right, and either an eight-foot pam- panorama or a couple more thirty-six inch prints down here on the end. Uh, Dave is going to work up a cost projection for us and get us some photos to choose from. I see he sent a email this morning um, projecting depending on what kind of prints we did, a cost of um, between eleven hundred and eighteen hundred dollars. I believe Chairman West had put some, s- s- it, it asked for some money to be put into the budget specifically for that reason. Um, Dave's going to figure out a way to send us out a bunch of pictures so we can tell them what we, what we like. But again, me and, me and Chairman West had discussed industries that, that built Sutter County and uh, and honoring them in our, in our commission room, since they're the ones who have paid for this commission room. So that's, I mean, we need to discuss, probably discuss that in our budget, budget workshop. On another note, I asked Sally to look into whether we have a policy on indigent funeral expenses, and it appears that we don't. Autumn and Christie from Vase Funeral Home had reached out to me because they have had some decedents whose care expenses they've been stuck with. But Wyoming Statute eighteen-three, five oh four C is pretty clear that if someone is indigent and doesn't qualify for payment of expenses from anywhere else like power, supplemental security, or Medicaid, and there's no family member to take possession of their remains, the county commissioners shall cover burial or crem- cremation expenses up to fifteen hundred dollars. Um, Sally, Cindy, and Bonnie, as well as Christina and Gary have been looking into it and found that some other counties have policies in place already. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but it is something we do need to address. Should be as simple as the funeral home signing an affidavit swearing that all other avenues of compensation have been pursued and presenting a, a voucher to the clerk's office. Uh, we do need to make sure we have some money budgeted for that. If they presented a voucher today, we would have to do a budget amendment to cover it because we don't have enough in our county commission other budget right now. Autumn estimates that it'll be about a thousand dollars per case, and that they see three to five such cases a year. On the bright side, though, the statute also gives us the ability to request reimbursement for that expense from the State Department of Family Services. So it's not all bad news. We should be able to recover. Um, should be able to recover a hundred percent. I don't believe the state pays for anything until you actually get the, the check though. So with the, the board's general approval, I'll follow up on that with the clerk's office as well as Mister DeLeon and come back to you with a policy proposal in the future. In the upcoming weeks, I had a library board meeting on the twelfth, a planning and zoning meeting on the fourteenth. And finally, Senator Jones and Representative Larson are putting together a community growth committee to try to get information out about upcoming impacts from the industrial projects we're going to see here in Sweetwater County, and ask that representatives from each local government participate. They are going to have their first meeting on June twenty-second. I do plan to attend along with our land use director to feel it out and see if we think it's necessary to be a part of. I've discussed this a little with Chairman West, and I think it could be a little bit redundant, especially since there's already a working committee that includes him and the mayors of the incorporated communities. But like I said, we can, we can feel it out and see if we think it's, it necessary to, to be part of. Uh, Mister Chairman, I think that's all I have. I'm sorry to have taken up so much time, but I guarantee that it was much less painful than the three days I spent listening to presentations and discussions from our federal partners at the WCCA meeting. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. No, I appreciate you uh, carrying the weight up there for that, especially in my absence as the board member. Uh, that can be a grueling few days, so. Thanks for the.
It'll be a test to see if he really did retain all of that.
I'm ready.
Now, thanks. Stay. We've heard enough whining about that now, Commissioner, so.
I'm done. I'm done with it.
As he mentioned, the WCCA will be meeting on the twenty-third to go over this building loan payoff proposal, so I would like a little feedback on your position on that. Obviously, we do have another meeting prior to that, so if you want to give it some thought or get some additional information, I guess get with Islander myself. Um, I do have an opinion on it, but I think it's kind of crazy personally, but we'll continue to speak more on that on the next meeting, I guess. Um, I also got the same email in regards to the Growth Committee, but if you're going to attend that, I guess you can report it back and let us know what you think in that regard. I had kind of the same concerns with redundancy and not knowing, you know, if S E D C was tied to that or could be or not, and they didn't seem to think that it would be, but I guess you'll see in your first meeting.
And Mister Chairman, um, um, Eric, Eric did reach out to me and say, say he'd look, he, he'll attend that first meeting, but he did ask that if we do want staff to be a permanent member of that committee, that, that uh, we, we asked maybe Kayla to do it, um, because he's buried. He's, he's got a lot of his blood.
Shane Bill.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, thank you. Um, and I, I think that it might be smart to include Kayla on that, just because she's integrated with the Economic Development Plans. They're working on their strategic planning right now. So then that can come back to us through Eric and, and, you know, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense to have her um, attend that, and I um, I was planning on attending as well, but obviously, we don't, we don't, we don't all need to be there, so um, wh- whoever ends up going to this first meeting, I think that we can work it out and have one person, and I'm, I think maybe having staff would be smart. Making sure we have the right person at the table.
I agree. Any other uh, questions or comments for Commissioner Richards? Thanks for the report, Commissioner. I too have a little lengthy one, so I gotta be careful here because I know Mary's itching to get on the microphone today. Been out for a while.
Well, thank you. I can hardly wait.
On uh, May twenty-fourth, I attended the Southwest Counseling Board's monthly meeting. Their organization recently applied to SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or grant funding as a C C B H C, which stands for a Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. Everybody loves acronyms in today's world. Uh, this program offers a million dollars per year for four years, but each year you have to continue to reapply and demonstrate that you've met the given criteria throughout the year. In the state, there were four organizations that applied and only one that was awarded, which was Southwest Counseling. According to their staff, they scored in the top ten percent in the nation, which they were pretty proud of, as they should be. The funding is a planning grant for outpatient services only and is a drawdown style, whereas they'll be reimb- they'll be reimbursed as the services are provided. Uh, aside from that, they continue to chip away at the brutal task of updating policies and bylaws, and are gradually making some headway there. We did have some discussions relative to component units and trying to understand the benefits and rewards of being under the county's wing, so to speak. This was mainly centered around the county facilities and why they are required to be handed over to the county when they're purchased. Um, obviously, I don't have all the history there, but I did reiterate that the rent was cheap. The retirement was nice, and the insurance pool has its perks too, so I'll continue to research more on that as it seems like each meeting has a new challenge. The Board of Health met last Wednesday, and Treasurer Cowan and I were both in attendance for that. They gained two new board members, which were City of Rock Springs appointments. So it's a relatively new slate of board members. I think in the five months I've been attending, they've had to elect officers three different times between resignations and appointments, so a lot going on there. Um, they've been down a nurse position for a couple of months, and have been advertising during that time and only had two applicants. and have been advertising during that time and only had two applicants. So seems to be kind of a common trend, unfortunately. Most of the other discussions that were had mainly came from Mark and I's concerns relative to their budget. As you just saw, they had to do a budget amendment for a hundred and twenty thousand to balance for this fiscal year. Similarly, when they presented, I had questions on their unbalanced budget that they're submitting year over year. Continues to be a concern of mine. And fortunately, they do have a decent reserve, but obviously that money will run out, especially as we continue to chip away that with Treasurer Cowan having some oversight of their finances and investments. And as we try to dwindle down the days cash on hand that these organizations have. Their board did seem very engaged and concerned as well, so they've scheduled to have a workshop. Unfortunately, I was invited after that was already set. It will be next week and I'll be unable to attend, but I hope to help them further along and try and get to the bottom of some of them. They were originally not planning on a cost of living adjustment, but after our discussion last meeting of the three percent, they proposed a three and a four percent cost of living. But again, without finding a way to balance adding additional expense seems like an odd next step, so. Hopefully, we can work through some of that and get things back on track as we begin finalizing budgets. Later that same morning, as Commissioner Richards alluded to, he and I met with Dave Mead from the museum to discuss the artwork like he mentioned. Dave dropped off a couple sample pieces of metal and acrylic artwork that we thought might help cover up the surgical white walls in here. They are by Sally and I's office on that little conference tables during break. Check those out. Give us some feedback on that. As Commissioner Richards mentioned, I did up our maintenance and repairs line item budget by fifteen hundred dollars this year, so we have three thousand in that account plus added an additional thousand for professional services. Those might not be the exact line items or expense, you know, that we want to pull from. We might have to do some shifting around there, but nonetheless, we do have some money there, which is pretty close to what Dave's estimates were on that, so. Thank Dave for his time and willingness to help us out and we'll continue to chip away at that. Last Friday, Commissioner Slaughter and I met with Irene Richardson, Bailey Doctor and Dan Stanton regarding the Castle Rock Hospital District's wish for a new ambulance facility to be built up at Memorial Hospital. This was some follow up that came from our last, from their last presentation, as you might recall. We reviewed and discussed a minor site plan they had developed and spent most of the time discussing the materiality of it. The location aspect seems to make good sense, but I personally am not sold on the timing or the future of EMS, given all the recent changes and although if you can believe it, it's already coming up on year two of that contract. Now, some good discussions were had, and I do have a copy of that site plan in my office if any of you would like to review it. We also discussed the financial aspect of the contract, and they've agreed to send us monthly reports moving forward, which I feel like Rob and I felt was appreciated. Aside from that, I've spent some time here at the courthouse, meeting with various department heads and elected officials over the course of the last three weeks. I had the chance to meet our new Assistant Public Works Director, who will be presenting on behalf of Jean's absence today, so. Let's try and break him in, right? I attended the retirement party for Shelley Russ last Friday afternoon and wish her well after, I believe, twenty two and a half years, I think is what she told me. So congrat- congratulations to her. Aside from that, Commissioners, that pretty well completes my report and I'll pause there at a respective time and stand for any questions. Hearing none, Commissioner Slaughter, you're up.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. On the nineteenth, I met with YWCA representatives along with Gary McLean and Gene Legursky to further discuss the concept of the YWCA moving into the west half of the Roosevelt School Building. After those discussions, it became apparent that they're really not ready to commit at this time. On the twenty third, as Commissioner Richards pointed out, I did not attend the County Commissioners Association meetings, which I had attended to to attend. I came down with some sort of dreaded gumbo and was sick in bed for three days. So I I do apologize to Commissioner Richards for leaving him alone at that. On the thirtieth, I met with county personnel that had concerns that morning. In the afternoon, I attended the Golden Hour Senior Center Board Meeting. They finalized their investment committee and investment policy, and their discussion also took place on their fiscal year twenty four budget request and their financial status. On the thirty first, I attended Memorial Hospital's Finance and Audit Committee meeting. They approved two capital requests to pass on to their full board at their meeting, which they've changed to this afternoon. The first was an MRI upgrade of a million one hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. The second was a U of U exam suite change for a hundred thousand nine hundred seventy one dollars. Their finance department presented an extensive revenue cycle review that is intended to help future collections. Their audit and our finance audit committee then voted to move their twenty four budget to the full board at their meeting this afternoon. On the first, I took the Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism Flaming George Bus Tour. There were twenty one participants on the inaugural tour of twenty twenty three. Commissioner Tolman joined on that. It was an excellent tour with great leadership, great snacks and food, and an overall excellent tour of one of Sweetwater County's finest resources. On the second, I had a discussion with representatives of Castle Castle Rock Hospital District Memorial Hospital, Commissioner West and myself, as Commissioner West alluded to. Once again, it was to gather information on the concept of building a new ambulance facility on the Sweetwater County property near Memorial Hospital. They did present an architectural rendering, which I also have a copy of, and Commissioner West alluded to the fact that he does have a copy of it in his office. We'd like to see it. There will be additional discussion that will follow on this. That afternoon, I attended the retirement party for longtime County Treasurer's Office employee Shelley Russ. The event was well attended with many former and current employees and many personal friends in attendance. On the third, I attended the Overland Stampede Rodeo in Green River. Excellent time with great attendance. It was a great night. Their stocks seemed to be very good, great participants in the rodeo, and everybody seemed to have a really good time. I will add a note that my son actually participated in the adult portion and was able to be the one who won the belt buckle for getting the ribbon off of a steer at that. That was kind of fun. On the fifth, we met most of the day with employees and elected officials on issues that are currently taking place. I was unable to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Da Vinci Robot at Memorial Hospital due to meetings with elected officials in the courthouse going longer than planned. And as I stated, the Memorial Hospital regular meeting will be this afternoon, so I will miss it. I do have Mister Legursky's Public Works Department report. I will go ahead and read it as part of the record if that would suit the rest of the board. On buildings, Mister Legursky states, we are working on the security wall project between the first floor hallway and voting. This project was approved under the capital construction projects in fiscal year twenty three. The switchgear at the Roosevelt Building for the generator is not working correctly. Comments has come to troubleshoot everything, and it looks like the switchgear needs to be rebuilt. We are working on a schedule for parts and installation. Crews are going through all of the HVAC systems and fine tuning them for the summer. We have repoured the concrete and installed the drainage trough that was removed to fix the the fireline water leak. Road and Bridge Department, the rainy weather has helped the road and bridge crew out. The moisture that is in the roadway helps with grading and compaction, and we don't need to haul water all over the county. Some roads are still impassable out in the red desert area because water is still over the roadways. We encourage everyone that travels these roads to be cautious as situations on each roadway change with the moisture we receiving daily. If the traveling public sees any road damage when they are out enjoying the great outdoors, we encourage them to call the Road and Bridge Office and report the damage. We cannot be on every road all the time, so an extra set of eyes on our roads is welcome. We are still hauling road based material to Farson Eden and Wamsetter to improve the roadways that were damaged over the winter and spring. The Farson Eden material is hauled from the local gravel pits on Wyoming Highway three seventy two, and the Wamsetter material is hauled from quarries in Rollins. The haul distance does slow the project down, however, the material is needed in both areas. Crews are out cleaning culverts and repairing flared sections that were damaged during the winter. They have also started cleaning out cattle guards. Parks and Rec Department is still shorthanded. We are having problems finding six month and three month employees. We are one three month employee short and two six month employees short. Despite this, crews are out moving, or excuse me, mowing, prepping ball fields and fixing sprinkler systems. The recent rain has helped all the parks out and they are greening up nicely. Engineering Department, the contractor for the fiscal year twenty twenty three asphalt overlay project has finished on Yellowstone, except for a couple of approaches that need to be fixed with some minor cleanup. They will start working on Blurtown Road in the middle of July. The Lagoon Road reconstruction project started last Wednesday. This project is going well so far, and D Bernardi Construction is sub excavating the roadway and starting to establish the sub base grade in the first phase of the project. The plans were advertised for the fiscal twenty three dust control control project. It will be bid on June fifteenth. The request for proposals for an engineering study on McKinnon Road, seat County Road number one has been advertised. We will have a pre proposal meeting on June ninth and the RFPs are due on June twenty third. We are redesigning, or excuse me, we are designing the Marsh Creek Culvert Replacement Project on County Road thirty three, Flaming George Road. This project will be completed in house by the Road and Bridge Department in the fall if we can obtain all of the required Army Corps and BLM permits. We are also starting to collect our annual traffic counts on the roadways. These traffic counts are on a three year rotation by roadway. This is critical information for future planning and selecting the proper pavement preservation techniques. The contractor that will seal the south parking lot at the Green River Courthouse and the purchasing parking lot at the justice facility is working on his schedule and notices will go out to everyone to refrain from parking in these lots for a couple of days later in June. And last but not least, custodial, this crew continues to get things ready outside. They also have the unenviable task of cleaning up the apple blossoms every day in front of the courthouse so they aren't tracked inside. This crew has been three employees short for the past two months and has still kept up with all of their duties due to the dedicated staff. Mister Chairman, that include, that concludes my report along with Mister Legursky's, and I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate that information. Any questions for Commissioner Slaughter? Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Tony Valdez, I'm the owner of Buckboard Marina. One question I have on your tour for the, did you say you wanted a bus tour of Flaming Gorge?
Yes, sir.
Why does that not come to Buckboard Marina?
That's an excellent question.
It is an excellent question. Four years now, I've not known none of you guys.
Mister Chairman.
Four, four years.
This, this is a time for Commissioners to talk to each other. Public comments came and went.
Okay. That's good.
Just not sure it's appropriate.
And I will bring that up.
So first off, the tour is not given by Sweetwater County. It's given by Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism, so our response to that would be to maybe communicate with them on making a potential stop at your facility. Any other questions as Commissioners for Commissioner Slaughter? Thanks for the report, Commissioner. Mister Shane Field, you're up next.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. SEDC, there's not a lot to report other than they will have their final third strategy planning session on Thursday. They are also in the process of revamping the website. And they're having discussions with some of the local real estate agents regarding affordable housing opportunities in Sweetwater County. And I also just wanted to mention that there's been, at the state level and at the county level, there's been a lot of discussion and some of it focused on in the SEDC planning sessions around affordable housing and what we can do and what our role is in terms of government to help support affordable housing across Sweetwater County and, you know, what what role we have in that. And so I think looking at the regulations that we have across all of our communities is something that we've discussed in SEDC and ensuring that we're not being overly burdensome throughout those processes to encourage growth and development, housing growth and development, and that also will help business development as well. So that's something that there is ongoing conversations. And then I also attended the Wyoming Business Council had the Harvard Growth Lab, and one of their areas is housing, and it was the same conversation at the state level as well. So it was really interesting to me because SEDC is having the same conversations even before some of the things are coming out of the Business Council. And so it makes me very excited that we're on track. We're looking to improve ourselves without any push from anybody else and identifying that these are concerns in Sweetwater County as well and where we can help support change to better our community and our community economic development. The museum, Dave sent me an email. So the history fair was a huge success. He actually sent me some pictures from it as well. It looked fantastic. They had over seven hundred and fifty students, teachers and parents attend. And they have been meeting with school district officials to finalize plans for their history textbook project. They have some collections that are doing a site visit tomorrow and Thursday here in Sweetwater County. And they're also planning a series of summer classes, workshops and events for the public, so that will be coming out soon as well. We have a specific purpose tax meeting, so we had one before our last commission meeting. We'll have another one Thursday. And we are discussing bonding of projects, and so I would expect that I'm going to add that to the agenda for our next meeting because we do have two county sponsored projects. I wanted their input on whether they were ready to move forward with those projects and what what they were prepared to do before I brought it in front of the commission to decide whether we would bond on those projects or not, or how much to bond. And so that our first meeting, we discussed bonding in general, kind of the summary of what that might look like. And then all of the entities were going back to their municipalities to reassess where they were with projects, where they were ready to, and if they were ready to bond or not. And then we were going to come back, so we'll have a good discussion with that on Thursday, and then we'll discuss here that at our next board meeting. The Joint Powers Telecom Board will be on the fifteenth, and Star Transit will be coming up on the twelfth. And then I also had a meeting with Craig Road regarding Project West, and we discussed just the project update, the timing. They're moving along very quickly, which is excited, are exciting for us. They are already hiring folks. They're looking for electrical engineers, which I think everybody is looking for electrical engineers right now. And so we did have some pretty good discussion about their partnership and workforce and and housing being an issue as well and a concern. And then their partnership with the college and supporting that. So I think that is everything. Oh, I also wanted to mention just that we've gotten a few emails and had multiple discussions with people regarding indoor sporting facility. And I know that that email went out to everybody, but just for public awareness that that is a conversation that's happening. We are, we're looking at what we can do, what we should be doing and what that might look like for Sweetwater County, but it has been brought to us by a number of citizens. And so I think that any input from that across the board would be good. And I look forward to further discussion with the board as well. And that is everything that I have. Chairman.
Thanks, Commissioner Shane Field. Any questions for Commissioner Shane Field?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Richard.
And I just want to point your, your, your discussion about housing. Planning zoning has been approached by somebody who wants to do some high density townhouses. And we do have a deficiency in our zoning resolution and and P N Z is addressing that. I know Eric has has met with the city to try to get some model language on how to allow townhouses in in the county because it always ever has to be for.
Good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, Commissioner Tolman, you're bringing up the end of it here.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. I attended on May sixteen to nineteen, I attended the National Association of County Officials, the Western Interstate Region. I did miss the budget session, but I did listen to it on YouTube, so I did get to hear that the chairman said that the mean ones were absent that day, so. I just wanted to let you know that I had listened to the presentation. It was an interesting meeting. John ASP Carbon County Commissioner was elected chairman of the Western Interstate Region. The main support that that group gives us is that they fight for our payment in lieu of taxes for the federal lands to make sure that they pay their fair share. And they were able to acquire the additional, almost like a duplicate of pill ARPA for us last year, which meant almost seven and a half additional dollars, seven and a half million additional dollars over a two year period through that ARPA pill, so. That's one of the greatest lobbying efforts they have going, and they are working to get a permanent pill program because right now, every time Congress meets, we have to fight to get our money. They discussed Biden's conservation rule for federal lands of wanting to make conservation use, one of the uses on federal lands under multiple use. And the director of the BLM Tracy Stone Manning was there and presented that. We had a great tour of the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. It was an interesting project to see how they could take state and federal and county and city officials working together to create a reserve that offset the development, the rapid growth they're having in the St. George area for that endangered species and the tortoise. They were able to create a special reserve that makes it easier for them to develop for housing and projects in the St. George area. So it was interesting to see that they could successfully implement something like that. for housing and projects in the St. George area. So it was interesting to see that they could uh successfully implement something like that. Uh, I talked to the world, the rural development uh people, and I did forward to Mister Valdez uh information on possible rural development grants or loans. I don't know that maybe would help you with the marine. I'd, I don't know. You'll just have to check with them. There is a contact in Riverton. I sent you a phone number that you could maybe try to reach out to them and have a, have meeting with them. Maybe they can uh assist you with the development of the Buckboard Marina. May twenty-third, I attended ethics training for the BLM Resource Advisory Council, uh which I was recently appointed to. We'll meet in August to provide advice to the Bureau of Land Management. May thirtieth, I attended the Young at Heart meeting. I want to congratulate them on their uh fiftieth anniversary celebration. I wasn't able to attend as I was gone, but they said they had a great turnout. They discussed their budget and I asked them if they could take a hundred thousand less and they almost had a stroke over that, but uh they said they would not be able to survive with a hundred thousand less this year, but I asked them to work towards maybe a requesting less next year because the early learning uh Child Development Center is producing a positive flow of income. But they're receiving forty thousand less this year for the senior meals and right now they're running at a twenty-seven thousand dollar deficit on those meals. They did raise the rates on the meals for uh non seniors. And they were working on their policy updates. So they're hard at work and doing great things. I also attended the Sweetwater County uh Flaming Gorge Bus Tour. And I think it's a good uh idea for to have them stop at Buckboard. So uh talk to Janessa Meredith at the uh in North Rock Springs. Go talk to her about making that one of the bus stops because I think that would be a good idea. Uh, June second and third, I attended the Overland Stage Roundup Rodeo. They had a record number of crowds. Uh, Friday night was a total rainstorm, but everyone's survived in spite of that. And so I want to give special thanks to the committee and the city of Green River. I believe they hauled twelve loads of gravel into that arena to make it usable for the Saturday night rodeo because it looked like a lake. So great job and thanks to the public for attending and supporting uh our rodeo. Attended the Shelley Russ Retirement Party Friday afternoon, June second, and that was also a great turnout. She'll be missed in the Treasurer's Office. And I've also received several uh comments from McKinnon residents regarding the road out there. And I want to thank Gene for uh Gene and Andy Hooton for working uh towards getting uh a study, an engineered study for that road so that we can look to maybe trying to improve. Maybe we can only do a section at a time, but maybe we can start to improve that road. So thank you, Mister Chairman. That is my report.
Thanks Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Toman? All right. Nice work Commissioners. Busy few weeks. And with that, we will move right along into the action presentation items. Under tab C, first up we have the Wyoming Transportation Commissioner introduction. We've got Brant Lyman here, the Wyoming Transportation Commission District Number Two Commissioner. Morning, Brant.
Chairman West, Commissioners, I appreciate you allowing me to come today. Um, I'm not going to take up too much of your time. I just wanted to briefly introduce myself. Um, I know most of you probably know me already. Um, but at the beginning of April of this year, I was appointed by Governor Gordon as the Transportation Commissioner for uh Commission District Two. Um, and I just wanted to explain a little bit about the Transportation Commission, um what my function is and how it relates to what you all do. Um, so the Wyoming Transportation Commission was um developed by statute in the early nineteen hundreds as uh part of the Highway Department. And basically the Transportation Commission oversees um all of the business of YDOT. Um, so we adopt their rules and regulations. We oversee their policy. Um, we also approve their department budgets and award contracts um for any improvement that comes from monies from the state highway fund, highway fund, excuse me. There are seven commissioners statewide, um seven commissioned districts. Um, again, my commissioned district is Commission District Two, um which is all of Albany, Carbony, Carbon and Sweetwater Counties. Um, so it's a big area. Um, I'm actually, I have two hundred and eighty miles of I eighty um as part of my district. So I'm well aware of the issues that we had out there this winter. Um, we continue to have this spring. So a little bit about YDOT, um just I think a lot of people don't realize the size and scope of YDOT. Um, it's by far the largest single agency that the state of Wyoming has. Um, we currently have about one thousand seven hundred and fifty employees um in the department. Uh, by we're by stat or I'm sorry, by legislature, we're allowed to have up to two thousand fifty employees. So YDOT's running about three hundred employees statewide um below uh the maximum they can have. And so that is also leading to a lot of issues. Um, I kind of caught a little bit of um Commissioner Slaughter's report um with uh Mister Legurski and the issues that they have short on crews. It's a very similar issue with YDOT just on a larger scale. For this fiscal year, um the current budget for YDOT is about nine hundred and fifty-four million dollars. So um again, um they're responsible, you know, for many of the things that, that we all realize, such as the planning and design of highways and interstate, the construction and maintenance of our roads. There's a lot of things that they do that I think people don't realize, such as all of the Wyoming Highway Patrol is part of YDOT. Uh, the Port of Entries and Inspection Services that they, that they do. Driver services such as driver's licenses, uh the registration portion that the state does uh for vehicles and uh license plates are all part of YDOT. Aeronautics, um which is all of the airports throughout the state are part of YDOT, although they do fall under a separate commission that oversees the aeronautics. Uh, Wild Link, which is the state emergency radio network, um which also has a separate commission, but is also part of YDOT. We also have all of the YDOT facilities uh that we deal with, such as the shops, um storage yards, um sand tents that you see throughout the state. And then also just vehicles and equipment that YDOT uses for maintenance, construction and then uh to perform their mission, you know, such as snow plows, um tractors, others, equipment, um and just vehicles. So I think this year we're actually looking at purchasing, I believe it was fifteen or twenty million dollars worth of new equipment. So I mean, it's just a very, very broad agency. Um, I've only been at it two months, so I'm still on a steep learning curve with it all. Um, so for the county commissions, why does the, the Transportation Commission matter? Um, so the biggest thing is, is the State Transportation Improvement Plan or the STIP. YDOT has uh, you know, more abbreviations probably than the military. So that's a lot of the learning is just, is learning all of these abbreviations. Um, but that is basically uh the planning and the money that's spent to improve and construct roads and highways interstate and and also local roads, um county roads. Um, basically any of the transportation that's, that's being worked on falls under the state transportation improvement plan. And that um programming is done every year, but in a four-year um outlook. Um, so we're, we're working through that right now. Um, so that's the select transportation projects. It's basically based on what resources there are, the transportation needs, and then also the, how it best serves the public. Um, basically the process starts in February of every year. It's sent to the Transportation Commission for approval in September and then goes to the Joint Appropriations Committee for the Legislature in December. And so that, that's basically how it progresses every year. And there's many opportunities um for public input as we go through that process. And also that's, that's part of my role is to, is if there's any concerns, um you know, for my constituents, which would be all the residents of my counties, um through you folks uh to basically get input on any of that planning and projects as we go through it. Um, a couple of other programs that, you know, counties and uh local communities could be interested in are the Commission Road Improvement Program or the Crip, which um there's approximately three million dollars per year in that fund that the Transportation Commission will award uh to, you know, local communities and county level. Um, those projects, they must be eligible for federal funding um to be uh considered. And there's also the Industrial Road Program, um which I think could be a benefit to Sweetwater County. And that basically helps counties construct roads that will serve an industry. Um, there's about four million each biennium that's put into that fund or about two million every fiscal year. And that's supplemental money. So it can't be used necessarily to fund the entire project, but it's maybe a way that YDOT can help counties, um you know, build those uh highways if they're needed. So just kind of some of the, the things, um kind of want to get to the, the gist here. This is probably something that you're well aware of and deal with all the time. Um, but just to understand some of the costs that YDOT has been, cost increases that we've been seeing um in from one to two years ago, hot plant mix, which is basically asphalt. Um, they, we, they were buying it for about thirty-six to forty-five dollars a ton. Today it's running about sixty-five to seventy-five dollars a ton. Um, binder, which is also part of the asphalt pavement, would run about four hundred and fifty to six hundred dollars a ton. Today it's nine hundred to a thousand per ton and it's been priced as high as fifteen hundred a ton. Mobilizations, just the mobilizations to get contractors to the projects. Um, we were running seven to nine percent. Now we're nine to twelve. Um, just traffic control on the highways. Um, it was about three to five percent for roads, six to eight for structures, and today it's six to ten percent for roads and as high as twelve percent for structures. Um, you know, chip sill was a dollar a square yard. Now it's doubled. Uh, fencing was about two dollars uh uh per linear foot, and now it's about five dollars. Um, approach slabs and concrete, you know, was three hundred dollars a square yard. Now we're five hundred. So basically it just goes on and on. We're, you know, basically we're seeing prices almost double on everything we do. So what that means is, um, you know, we're, we're starting to see fuel taxes decline, which is the main driver for the money that YDOT has to do these projects. Well, we see the costs increase. So, you know, we're that means that things have to be cut, projects have to be cut. And so if we go back to the STIP, when that planning's done in Cheyenne, they don't really know necessarily, you know, what's important to the county. Uh, what projects do we really need? And so I think as we go through this, it's going to become more and more important that we get that input. Um, especially so that I can, when I'm part of those meetings, I can say, hey, you know, Sweetwater County, you know, we really can't cut this project. We really need this, you know, that I can advocate for what we need in these counties. Um, and also the other big thing is, is that I act as the liaison to YDOT for any issues that constituents might have. So if that's people that are having issues getting access, um signage or anything else with YDOT, um I can help them with that, at least try to find the people that, you know, can help them in the organization um and see what we can do to get them through the process. Um, so that, you know, YDOT can fulfill their mission, which is basically to serve the residents um and citizens of Wyoming. Um, so with that, I mean, that's the, the basis of my spill. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, although like I say, I'm new, so I may not have the answer, but I'm definitely happy to, to try and find it. So.
Well, thanks, Brant. We appreciate you coming here today and introducing yourself and what uh you do as a Commissioner. Congrats on the appointment. Sounds like a busy job on top of uh, you know, an additional job outside of that. Any questions, Commissioners, for Mister Lyman?
Chairman, I want to echo what the chairman said. Congratulations on your appointment. I don't think the governor could have made her, made a better choice and, and thanks for your willingness to serve.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Toman.
Uh, I do have a copy of their STIP book from last year with all the projects and, and what the order of operation of a construction on the interstate is and all the, all the roads. If any of you want to see that book, will they have a new one, a new report they give to us? The District Two usually comes to us and hands us that STIP book. So it probably won't be available till this fall then, the new one, right?
Chairman West, uh Commissioner Toman, uh that's probably correct. It would be more in the fall. Um, the annual report for twenty twenty-two um has just come out. So I don't know if you've seen that or not. It is on YDOT's website. Um, if you're interested in taking a look at that, and it discusses the projects that they completed. Um, you know, the last year, um I eighty is definitely the five thousand pound gorilla in the room. Um, and that is, um, you know, a big issue with YDOT and also with legislature um to work on, you know, future funding for I eighty, um because it is such a huge thing. But it's also, you know, very vital for not just our local economies and the state economy to transport goods, but you know, nationwide. It's such a vital transportation link for the entire country.
It is a good thing that they only tackle one lane at a time generally, except for the road between three seventy-two exit and Granger exit. I was on that this weekend and they've got both sides uh under construction. And they have put a rumble strip right down the middle, I guess, to keep you, keep you straightened out, but it's very it's very distracting. I, I, I would, I would not think that would be a good, good move for future construction jobs. To stick that big wide rumble strip right down the middle of that construction lane.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Toman. I'm happy to pass that along.
If you've been on that piece of road, it's.
Um, I, it's been a few weeks since, um.
They have both sides of it torn up. So people going to Salt Lake or, you know, heading west, it, it's like twenty miles of it. Ask Bridger, I bet he bit, came over it this morning. And it's both lanes. Usually they alternate. They do one side one year and one side another year, but they've got both both lanes under construction, single lane, and they put that big wide rumble strips. They can barely stay in the middle of it without hitting it all the way through there. So I just wanted to point that out.
Sure. I'm happy to, to try to find more information about.
Yeah. And isn't John Edens the new uh High Desert or our district? Is he our new district leader?
That is correct. He is the district engineer um for Phil District Three. Um, so it is a little bit confusing. The, the commissioned districts overlap with Phil districts, but they're not the same. So the Phil districts, um I don't want to say they're arbitrary, but their borders are more based on breaking the state into kind of five equal pieces of area and highway miles, whereas our commissioned districts are broken along political subdivisions, which are the county lines.
Well, we're excited that Johnny Edens came out of retirement, went back to work for our area. So thank you for telling that.
I'd be happy to.
Any other comments or questions, Commissioners? Brant, thanks again for taking the time to come over and introduce and explain everything. I'm sure we'll have more questions as it comes about and as you get your your feet wet more and learn about the organization more than just two months in. But congratulations once again, and we'll look forward to keeping the lines of communication open in the future.
And I have a few cars. Can I just leave them with an issue maker here?
Yeah, please do. We've got some back here too, if you want them, Brant. All right, Commissioners, next up, under tab C, we've got item two, which is the Buckboard Marina Realignment Presentation. We've got Mister Tony Valdez here this morning to present. And now is your time. Good morning.
Not sure where to put all the stuff where you can see it. There's a little bit. The first thing I'd like to state is, uh, I am Tony Valdez, owner of Buckboard Marina. That's my wife Jennifer. Oh, sorry. I know she's there. It's my wife Jennifer Valdez. And one of my first questions I have to ask, just have to ask is why in four years, since we have purchased this facility, took over the lease, why in four years has not anybody, as far as a commissioner, governor, any- governor, anybody come out and visited Mr. and Val, Mr. and Mrs. Valdez and then asked them, what could you do for us? What does this bring to this community? What, what, what does this Buckboard Marina, what is the value to this community? As far as Sweetwater County, Green River, Rock Springs, and the surrounding areas, so that's my first question to all the commissioners is that, you know, why? Until we do a development plan that is strictly with the Forest Service, our, our lease is with the Forest Service, our master development plan is with the Forest Service. It doesn't say city, county, state. It says federal. We're on federal land, so I want to get that clear. And it's, and the master development plan is kind of like a business plan. You know, I'm a contractor too, if you don't know, so a business plan, and my perspective is what I look for is a business plan. So we had to adapt our master development plan as a business plan per se. In that master development plan, we started, I started looking at some stuff, and there's some exhibits here. I don't know who to give them to, or if you. So what's it, what's, what's going on is, I don't know where they can see it.
We should have a copy of them.
No, you might not, because I haven't seen it, but. So what it is, this is the master develop, I don't think you'll see it, but so this is our lease area. That's the seventy-seven acres. The green line on the border is a quarter mile radius that, that's this. This is FCR, FCFR thirty-six. That's a, that's a direct order from the federal government about camping, shooting, recreating within a quarter mile of any facility on Flaming Gorge, just not Buckboard Marina, any facility. So that's that, and that's this one. And then what we proposed, so you know, is this, we have a seventy-seven acre lease, we're entitled to eighty. Okay, so my question to the federal government was, not the city, not the state, not the county, not the commissioners, but the federal government, where's my seventy-seven acres, which is forty-four acres of water, when the water evaporates? Pretty good question, ain't it? You lease land, you got forty, you got eight, seventy-seven acres. So when forty-four acres disappears, what do you have? That was my question. So that was brought to the Forest Service. During that conversation was like, well, it's seventy-six acre, sorry, we're, we're four acres short of an eighty acre lease, which is LaCern, Cedar Springs, they all have eighty acre leases. We just happen to fall in Wyoming, so we're talking to Wyoming. So I sent that off, but it went to our engineer, JFC. We do, we use all local, small business type people here. That's the way we roll. So we went to JFC and had him draw up this, this, this master, it's actually a site view, site plan with a hundred foot setback on the shoreline, which is right there. But something I'd like to bring to your attention, this is, this, this picture was taken in two thousand fifteen. The water elevation was sixty, forty. Okay? This is two thousand twenty-three. Kind of a difference, huh? Wouldn't you say? That's a little bit difference of land and water. My, my water evaporated, but ain't my forty-four acres of land still there? Yeah, it is. So my, my question to the federal government was, if my property's exposed on this side over here, I'm, I want to put up a pier. I want to put my piers up right there. My harbor has to go there because there's no other place to put a marina except for in the middle of the channel, which will directly impact all public traffic. We've already had this discussion. It's, it's a big deal. It's a big deal with the public coming in here. So the, the acre lease comes clear across, as you can see in here, hold on, of forty-four acres. So basically, this, our land is, our, our property lines are touching all this land over here, and it also comes back in this channel, fifteen hundred feet and all the way to the front. See how it goes? This is all land back in here now. And now we have no piers here because we have four hundred to five hundred feet of shoreline exposed. So the reason for this was, the only reason, it wasn't a land grab. There's so much disinformation out there. I cannot believe it. I mean, I can't believe this county's, this, this BS is going around. The disinformation about land grabs, we're selling, we're doing this and that, but yet nobody's come down and asked us. Weird, no one. Not you. She has, she came down, I invited her, and you might have been busy. I'm telling you, you might have been busy, but four years is not, not accountability. Okay? So the adjustments that you see is that. That's what was prevented or presented to the US Forest Service. Not the county, not the city, for a reason. I deal directly with the federal government. I don't have to go to you guys. They have to go to you guys. That's the chain of command I follow. And all of a sudden, I'm the bad guy. Mr. Val, Valdez is the bad guy. All of a sudden, there's all this talk about down here. We get an, uh, uh, inspection by the tax commission all of a sudden. We haven't seen them for four years. They come down. What's that about? So I'm a little bit pissed off, yeah, but this is the reasoning for this adjustment. It's not a land grab. There's nothing about a land grab. It's about a business, a small business trying to survive. That's all it is. And that's all we were trying to do, so everybody knows, they hear it from the horse's mouth. This is the adjustment. And if you look at that adjustment, it's all within the quarter mile restricted, restriction area. And a hundred foot setback of shorelines. So these, all these areas we're talking about is only literally a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet off that shoreline setback. It's not the green line that goes to FS, Forest Service Road Eight that goes to South Buckboard. There's two vault tanks over here and over here. There's none on this side. There's a reason. We're a marina. LaCern don't have this problem. Cedar Springs don't have this problem. Funny, only, only us in Wyoming have a problem. Who do we turn to for help? Who do we go to? I mean, really? I've got a list of stuff. I mean, it's just, it's just dereliction to duty all around, all around. I mean, so anyway, this is the adjustment, so everybody knows this is what we're doing. This is the CFR, the CFR that's in place for quarter mile camping and shooting. We'll get into the shooting part of it here in a minute. So one thing is, so the boundary adjustment, that's what we're doing. That's the, that's, that's, you heard it from me. And our lay lines, our forty-four acres of lay lines, that's water now, supposedly, we have water, just pitcher water, and it goes away. Where's that dirt? Where's that lay line hit, right on the dirt? So we feel that's our property, and we should take full advantage of that property because we do not have the area to put a marina, the, 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 the slips and the piers in because they go north to south. The water, that, that, that little bay goes east to west. So now imagine sixty, forty elevation, we're clear to the top, and now six, six thousand, which we went to in two thousand twenty-two in the fall, we went to six thousand foot elevation. That's, that's major. Don't sound like much. Thirty feet of drop is equivalenced over four hundred feet of vertical shoreline exposed. How long's our piers? Three hundred feet. So you can imagine, it's sixty, forty, I'm right there. Now I gotta go four hundred feet to get to the water. Now I'm going to put a three hundred foot pier across the bay this way that will impede all of traffic. So we'd have to go this way, which is not feasible, none of it's feasible on a low water situation here. So what's happening now is we are trying to readjust, and I'm going to, I'll, I'll show you why we're trying to readjust, and this is, so I hope everybody can see this, but so these are our slips. We want to put in these little bays out that, you know, out of the way in the quarter mile radius. And so these are where we're going to put our slips that would be the actual sea pier that would go across in this area right here. This is C double D D, so people don't, so they don't, people who don't know, that's the public launch ramp right there. This is our water pickup right here. This little thing right here is a water pump, and that supplies all of the public's water supply in the campgrounds and ours. Drinking, it's all, it's, it's, it's all, it's all drinky, it's all public water supply by the Forest Service. So that elevation at six thousand feet, that pump was two feet from hitting the ground. We have to continually monitor it, but it has to be set at a certain distance where it does not suck the, the soot from the ground, cut, you know, infiltration of soot and debris. So at six thousand feet, we were two, two feet away from that, happened to be moved anyway. So one of the reasons that we did this is because we got to move towards the channel. And that's, that's, sorry, I got better pictures, but the channel being, and I have a bit of stuff for you, but the channel being out here. This is us, this is the piers that are not there. So that's the piers that are completely dirt, where the dirt is now. The water here is right around, and the, the, the bay elevation is not really that critical. It is going to bottom out at fifty-nine ninety-seven. There'll be no water, basically, back in this bay. You're very shallow. The main channel of the river runs right here. So the main channel of the river is out here. So what, what, and if you can see our, what we've developed right here, it shows it. It's base, hold there a second, please. It's basically this right here, and this is this right here. Well, if you see right, right here, there's a pump, there's a, there's a Forest Service water pump that has to go in. That's a Forest Service water pump. That's not there yet. It's scheduled to go in in next year. That water pump has to go there due to low water years because now we already know, and we have to be really proactive now because we've seen what happened, and it's going to happen again because of the drought situation, but the water has to be out here in the channel and seventy, their water pickup has to be out here as a cliff. And it's going to go down the cliff to seventy feet of water. They're going to pick up the water there. Pick up the water here, pump it all the way across this, over to this side, following the same footprint of the piping, and so we can bring water supply to the, to the chlorinating building, chlorinate it and pump it up to the tank. That's what that is. So that little piece of earth right there, that's what that entails. That's that part of that lease, that thirty-five acres of lease. The, the water tanks up in here, it's the elevated water tank, the big one down there, everybody sees. So it's, it's literally, if you were to look right here, the water tank's right there. It's quite a distance. So, and doing that, there's this, we have a problem of waves in the harbor, that it's always been a problem, especially in high water years. There's a, a wave action that happens in here. This is called an attenuator, it's a break wall, a wave break wall right there. That's a, that break wall. LaCern's got two of them. They've went through the loops, the city, the, the, the state of Utah and LaCern Marina, and they got grants, and they put in these walls. They're three million dollars each. So everybody knows, there are a million dollars to move. They're going through this problem right now. LaCern just started going through this problem. That's why I know the dollar figure. It's millions of dollars to move their wall out to where it needs to be. Luckily, the water came up a little bit, so now we need two. We actually need one here. We're going to, you, you need one on this side facing out, need one on this side facing out to protect the marina will shift to up in here and over here because this will be high and dry or so low, you won't be able to get a boat in there, period. So our thinking is, if you see this map and the other ones, is these little, these little piers, that's where we're going to try to put our campground, our piers in these areas that will impact anybody because of the quarter mile restriction that is in place already. So considering the public and the consideration of the public, we have not taken up one piece of earth. We've not, we're not trying to, we're not trying to do a land grab. This is an adjustment, an, an adjustment only about marina. So I can keep functioning in Sweetwater County. What is a, you know, they, they talk about fuel. It's funny, you know, and, and we don't have to, then in a marina definition, we don't have to supply fuel. Do we want to? Heck, yes, we want to. I mean, any businessman would. But at a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar investment for a, for a, for a pier and a fuel slip, you know, that's a lot of money. On a good year, they sell ten thousand gallons of fuel. Ten thousand gallons. You know what the markup is? One dollar. That's what we mark it up, one dollar to the public. So ten thousand dollars a year on a twenty-eight thousand dollar investment? Twenty-eight years to pay back. Not a very good investment for me. It just ain't. So fuel is, yes, it's priority. Is it number one priority? No. And if you look at our business plan, which you, I think you have, because you requested the information, you've probably seen that on our master development plan, what we're trying to do as far as fuel. So that's where we're at with the fuel, so everybody knows. Fuel is a big issue, yeah, but the waste pump out's an issue too. That's Forest Service. It's not Buckboard Marina. That's not us. That's the Forest Service. The pump out, I mean, the, the, the fuel pump can be us. But like I say, it's a, it's a giant investment, a giant investment. So at this point, I'm not willing to do that. But what we, what we want to do is bring the public attention to what we are doing because we submit our paperwork to the Forest Service, they submit it to you. And then all of a sudden, a big blow up. We didn't even know what was coming out. We didn't even know. We never had one clue this was submitted or was going to go to the public until we start getting the phone calls. And we start getting people showing up like tax commissioners wanting to know, take pictures of all the stuff we're doing. Four years, I mean, if, if the new guy was on the block, you think that they would have came in right then, when the, the let, the last leasing vacated and the new leasing took over that lease. That's where I think things should have rolled, but funny how the public gets involved. And all of a sudden, we start getting people coming down here with public interest on federal property. So yeah, that was the, 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 the theory behind the eighty acre lease and, and adjusting that from seventy-six acres to eighty. That's the reasoning behind it. The other reasoning before, for the move is the Drowa release plant of water that comes out of Flaming Gorge Reservoir. And they've been doing it now for the last three years. They're stealing Wyoming's water. My opinion, a hundred percent. A lot of people behind me, yes. We feel that the federal government, the Bureau of Reclamation's been stealing our water for three years. They have over, so in, in Flaming Gorge Reservoirs, three point seven five million gallons. Their Drowa plan wants to take out one point five million gallons of water. That's almost half of our frickin' reservoir. That's forty-five feet of volume. Now, where's forty-five feet of volume here? This water right now is twenty-three to twenty-five feet deep. So that tells you what the marina is. It's not a marina. Why would you put water out there? I mean, why would you put fuel out there? If it goes away next year, that's a big investment, you know, I mean, it's, it's a big investment, so the Bureau of Reclamation can't guarantee us, and I worked directly with Chris Brown on a lot of issues, our state acting, a senior attorney general. That's who I deal with. A lot of times, me and him are the ones going back and forth to the feds, commenting to the feds because as an American citizen, I have that right. I have that right to stand up for myself and stand up for this county because I don't see nobody coming down here knocking on my door, asking me what they can do for me. So I'll help you guys out, and I'm going to. This ain't a, just a dish on everybody. I'm here to help. Let's not get that. I mean, let's get that straight right now. I'm going to try to keep it short. I think there's so much. I had a four hour presentation that you came to and Eric came to, and it's like fifteen minutes, and it's really got me into a bind. It's far, not a bind, but a, to get the point across, so the, the water pickup, I just, I told you about that, where our water supply is, where we need to be is, it's literally, you know, almost two thousand something feet to where we got to go. So on the, another thing is, so on public safety, and this is where I take it really personal, since I've been here at, at Buckboard, in four years now, since two thousand nineteen, I've asked the federal government why this state is, we bought a year-round operation. Why ain't there year-round water? We don't have year-round water. I don't know if anybody knows that. I have water from April to October. From October to May, I buy water from Zewick, our, our, our local contractor. We, I buy from Steve Zewick water, you know, seven thousand or seven hundred dollars a load. I run about seven to eight thousand dollars of water to keep a public facility open, so the public can come in, use the bathroom and flush the toilet. Me, not nobody else, me, okay? Now, I starts thinking, what if we had a fire? My God, what if we had a fire here? And we had public. And we had public. We, we got a restaurant. We have a bar. We have apartments. What if we have a fire? How are we going to fight it? Who's going to get there? No one for an hour. I'll guarantee it. So I asked the Forest Service, why is my fire hydrants? And you, you'll know this code because it's a city code. Why are my fire hydrants fifteen hundred feet apart to three thousand, almost three thousand feet, half a mile apart? And they're not even near the buildings and we have. Six, seven thousand gallons of water at thirty pounds of PSI, which is illegal. You gotta have forty, thirty-five to forty-five pounds PSI for, stop the infiltration of the dirt and the water flowing back into your pipe joints. So I brought this to their attention and they told me it's not in there. It's not. They don't have to provide fire, provide fire protection. And I said, wow, that's cool. Wow, imagine that. Public, public place and you don't have to provide any public safety issue or concerns. There's no public safety concerns basically for this. So I told them, you know, we need to, we need to do something about it. And they've still to this day have balked me on it. I've heard talk of a looped water system coming in. A looped water system is what I designed, not the Forest Service. I brought it to their attention. A looped water system is the safest water system to use. But. If you have your underground storage tanks, which we don't have, get rid of the elevated tank. We put underground storage tanks and put, you know, a couple twenty thousand gallon tanks under there. We have enough. Water. To maybe fight a fire, but. Also in that loop system. What that gives you. Is. Fire protection. And there's a, there's a public campground right there with no fire protection. None, not none, none. Look how far it away. You know where the nearest fire hydrant is? Over here by this building. That's the public, that's the public. Campground. This is our campground. This is our peers. We have two fire hydrants. Now we just seen what happened to Lake Powell. I mean, obviously I've seen what happened to Lake Powell last two, three days ago on, on, on the fires and how fast they spread from boat to boat to boat. If you didn't, you need to go to YouTube and watch what happened at Lake Powell with these boats. They jumped from boat to boat to boat. The guy went sixty seconds. Sixty seconds. Boom, boat, boom, boat, boom, boom. They couldn't even pull the boats out. Now. Imagine a trailer park. Fiberglass boat, fiberglass trailers, propane, propane, gas, gas, trailers. Now imagine if a fire started in a trailer park right here and one of these little, and you know. And we got to call somebody. It's an hour away. Who's at risk? Who's at risk? The public. The public a hundred percent are at risk because we can't supply on a lake, a fire system. And they told me I have a fire pump. You know how long it takes to get a fire pump and three thousand feet of hose up to a fire? It takes hours. It would take me an hour. So this public safety issue is a big deal. The, the fire protection is a big deal. It is a big deal. We need a looped water system. In federal regulations, it says anything under the ground and, and below ground is. Federal, federal monies has to put that infrastructure in. Not the private guy, not, that's not the county, not the city, no one. So my question to them for the last. Four years. Where's our loop system? Now they're saying, well, we might get one here in another year or two. Okay. So yeah, that's, that's my, that's one of my biggest is, is the water and where we're going to get the water. How it's going to be supplied up here and where, and if we do that, why aren't we putting in a loop system? They told me to take them, this is, I'm a contractor now. And they told me that would take them three months to put this loop system in. I had my contractors, my buddies give me a call and I call them and had them give me an idea. Two weeks. Two weeks to put this loop system in. And it takes the federal government three to four months. Perfect. And now we're still in the negotiating part process. This ain't even happened. This ain't even approved. There's nothing. So. Just so you can hear some of my concerns. The other one is. So. I got a, I got some books here. I'll hand out to whoever wants to kind of look at them. Cause it has some real big safety concerns that need to be looked at. The biggest one. The biggest one that, one of the biggest ones that I deal with date al- almost monthly. It just happened last Friday. Is the public. The public. Coming down to South Buckboard and Buckboard. This is our recreating public that are maybe just. I don't, I, I, I don't know. There's no excuse for this. Firing. High-capacity. Guns with high-capacity clips and, you know, they're, they're high-capacity guns like ARs. AK forty-sevens. So last Friday, one of my. We have our guests that are staying there. Brought something to my attention. He goes, I was just driving through and he's an elderly guy. He goes, Tony, I drove by and he stopped. He goes, hey, Tony, I want to tell you something. He goes, Friday night. There was thirty high-powered rifle shots directly across from Buckboard Marina within five hundred yards. A high-capacity thirty round, thirty rounds every direction. Now you go take a look what, what's down there. There's not a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet that are in a camper down there on South Buckboard. So. Now this guy's blowing off some rounds and it, it's all fun. Maybe he has something to drink. That's all good. But what if it hits us, me? One of you guys, Chairman Toman is down there. Joe blows over there, blows round off, hits her, hits one of these guys, kills him. Then what? This is a hundred percent preventable. I've been a contractor. I've worked on some high-profile jobs. Safety is number one. Safety is number one. Public safety is number one. Accidents are preventable. This is the pure hundred percent case of preventable accident right here. So that was last Friday. Now, if you go to the county sheriff records, you're going to find out this has happened many of times. I was out working, me and my son, this is just a, the short description of what happened.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're going over a little bit. So if you could just.
Remember four hours, fifteen minutes. I've had four hour presentation, fifteen minutes. I'm not trying, I gotta.
No, I understand.
This is a public.
We just have a lot to get through.
I know, but you know, public safety, you're, you're an elected official. You took an oath. There's a public safety issue here that has to be addressed.
Continue on. I also have a, a duty to keep this on track.
Right on. We do too.
Understand.
We have a duty to the public to bring this to your awareness.
Please continue.
So there is a big public safety issue of shooting within this quarter mile radius. And there's, it's all in this book and I'll give it to you. She can go through it. Um, one thing I want to ask you. I'll go to the next one. What is the fishery? What is the fisheries net worth to a county? To Sweetwater County? Does anybody know what the, the value per fish to Sweetwater County is?
All right. So Mr. Valdez, we're going to, we're going to stick to the realignment issue. That's what we're here to discuss today. Um, I appreciate the information. Do you have anything on that you'd like to add before we get into?
Yeah, I want you to come visit me down at the Marina. I got, I, I have, I, no, you hang on. I have something for you to look at that you should have came down and nobody has. Now it's a big public issue. It is a big public issue, safety issue. And misinformation.
Okay. So in response, I've given you your time. None of us have been up here for four years, by the way.
No, you haven't.
So we didn't ask for the realignment.
He has.
Who?
He's been around this commission for way longer than that.
Months.
And what was your position before that?
Let me finish. I gave you your honorable time. Let me address some of the things you brought forward to us.
Bring it.
We did not ask for the realignment. The public brought it to our attention and so we're diving into it. As you mentioned, it is not our decision. It is between you and the Forest Service and the lease that you have. So I don't think it's a negative thing for us to dig into the details and figure out. There's always two sides to the story. That's why we appreciate you coming to bring your side to our attention. The invitation was extended. Commissioner Toman and Mr. Bingham went down and visited. I don't think the full commission needs to attend. We also violate Open Meeting Act rules when we do that.
It's all right.
So we are. We haven't even taken a position on it. We've been trying to gather information on it. We're hearing from multiple constituent concerns. The national, or excuse me, Forest Service came and presented to us on what the situation was. And so we're continually digging to figure out what's going on. We feel like we owe that to the public who has expressed that and who our constituent base that we answer to are on what the situation is. So. I understand the frustration from your part. Um, I would ask for a little bit more respect. You don't have to agree with everything we're doing up here. But we're not here to, you know, get into an argument match back and forth when ultimately. It's the federal government making the decision.
Sure.
Like I mentioned, we have influence. We think you've done an honorable thing. Commissioner Toman brought back a tremendous report of the improvements and upgrades you've made. I understand the financial burden that you've discussed and you've brought forth to our attention. We can reason with that. Um, you know, you are a small business. You are a recreation business. It's important to the tourism in this community. And we want to support that. So, you know, getting, getting off on the wrong foot, I don't think is going to help either party and we want to do what's best for all involved. So I would ask. That you tone it down and just show some appreciation as we get through this as a commission to help you out, whichever avenue that may be. Any other comments or questions, commissioners?
Chairman, I hesitate to jump in, but to answer Mr. Valdez's first question. Why have none of us been there in four years? There are thousands of businesses in Sweetwater County. There's five of us. Your business is important to us, but so are those other thousands and, and we don't have the, the resources to go visit every business in Sweetwater County in anticipation that at some point they're going to have some needs. We have meetings here every other week and we have public comments and concerns. And the public is welcome to engage with us at any point, and that includes you. And we did not hear from you at any point. Until the public started coming to us with issues. We represent forty-five thousand people in this, in this county. And a lot of them, more letters than on any other issue we've dealt with, came to us with concerns. I don't think a single one of us went out and said you were doing a land grab. I don't think any of us. Brought up any untruths. All we did was ask questions.
Sure.
We are a cooperating agency with commenting ability with the Forest Service. One of the things that requires of the Forest Service is that they notify us with their, of their plans. And that did not happen in this case. That is our concern. I, I think you have great plans. But I think the proper process to deal with those plans is a proper environmental process. The kind where the Forest Service notifies their cooperating agencies. So we can gather information and make proper comments and we weren't afforded that. That has been our concern from the beginning. I don't think anybody on this board has, has challenged. What you're doing. Has it come from the public? Yes. But I, I kind of think that your aggressions are a little bit misplaced here with us. And I think you are under the misnomer that we have control over Kokoni salmon, that we have control. What we have is comment ability. And we can't do that unless we have good information. And it took us several meetings just to get copies of the actual realignment and what it looks like. I, I went into this with a thought and I, I still think it. A categorical exclusion was the wrong process for this. There needed to be a NEPA process.
That NEPA has been approved. We've just been done over there.
We have not been a part of a NEPA process.
Not recently.
No, on this. Realignment proposal is what I'm talking about. Sweetwater County was not apprised of it. We found out about it on Facebook, which is not the way a cooperating agency, which is not the way a cooperating agency should be notified. So my problem is with the Forest Service here and the Forest Service knows that's where my problem is. So I, again, I think your, your aggressions are a little bit misplaced. Law enforcement is Forest Service's responsibility out there. Your water problems are Forest Service's responsibility. But I, I can't put you above and beyond all of the other thousand businesses in Sweetwater County. It's, it's, it's not my job to come out there and solve them. Once we, we knew, we sent representatives.
After I invited them.
That was, that is, that is absolutely great. And we appreciated that. But then you come here. And attack us for things like.
Like what?
Not having somebody else's bus tour come to your business. That's not our place.
Oh, it's not, but look.
Hang on, hang on. Point of order, point of order. Mr. Richards has the floor. I, I asked for some decent respect of letting us speak. We didn't talk over you. Please allow him to continue on and we're going to end this.
I'm, I'm honestly unsure as to why you came here because we were under the impression that we were going to get an explanation of of your realignment. And we've got about two minutes of that and we've got about twenty-five minutes of all your problems with the Forest Service, which we cannot solve.
I'm not asking.
Unless it's through the cooperating agency status. That's all we have. I'm, I think I'm done gathering information here and I'm ready to. To move on.
I agree. Is there any other comments, commissioners? Please do. We've got two minutes. We are about twenty minutes behind schedule.
I think the reason why it's a little combative is you guys informed the previous owners. So he could come and speak publicly and put out all the misinformation, which then went in the papers. And. We have all this public. Thinking that we're trying to do a land grab. Which is nothing like what we're doing. Every place that we've been in, every business, every home. Whether it was a rental, a business, a home that we owned, we've left better. Than we started with. That's what we intend to do now. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to address, we did not. But everybody's welcome to come here and we had public comment period that they.
We do. I do respect the public.
And we took those public comments and we use that as a way to go out and get, get information. And that included sending representatives to your, your meet and greet to gain information. We put you on our agenda because we wanted to gain information from here. We don't want to be combative. We want information. When we, when we say the public should be aware of this and look into it, that's because they should. That's our job as representatives of the public is to inform the public. We didn't tell them yes or no.
Public safety.
Okay.
Public safety.
We are.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please take one minute. Go ahead. Just to address your concern. I can unequivocally state to you that we did not inform the prior owners of what took place with this. They did contact me with concerns about this, but we did not reach out to them with respect to that. With respect to your concerns that we have not been out to visit your, your place. I did. I let you know that I could not come out for that, that weekend. I had family here for a, for a high school graduation and could not make it. I offered two separate times to come out. In fact, I didn't come out. Under the assumption that we did have a time set up for that Monday at nine AM. When I got there, I looked and I had received an email message from Mr. Valdez that morning.
I left you his phone number and stated that that would be a better way to contact us as well.
Continue on, Mr. Slaughter.
So with, with respect to that. I would also like to state, I have been out there. I have participated at your restaurant. I've told many people I was there for your, one of your seafood. Buffets. It was fantastic. I told many people of that. So I have been there. Uh, and, and want you to know that we, we, our interests. Why with respect to protecting the interest of the public. We have concerns as Commissioner Richards stated with respect to what took place with the Ashley National Forest. But it's certainly in our best interest to have a Marine out there and to work with you. So we, we want you to understand that we don't want to have a confrontational relationship with you. We want to work with you to make this work. But we, we believe it has to go through the correct process to do that.
Sure. We, we appreciate it. And I'm not trying to be overspeak in view or anybody. I'm just saying, this is a really tough, touchy subject. But one thing I would like to do is before we go any farther.
Please, because we're wrapping up. Go ahead.
The Kokoni salmon.
He's talking into the mic. There's a lot of people watching.
The Kokoni salmon. So. This is the net value. I've done six months of research to find this and not Wyoming. Not, I'm not saying the county, no, what I'm saying, I came to the Sweetwater Commissioners, I, not the Sweetwater. Chamber Commerce, the fishing game and asked, what was the net value of a Kokoni? To Sweetwater County. Now, as we're talking Sweetwater, the, the volume is, because this is, this is a thing for us to talk about. So what is the, what is it? What is the angler per fish catch? What is that value? Guess what that value is? In two thousand, I got the studies right here provided by Utah Fishing Game. That study is seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents per fish. Guess what it costs to stock that Kokoni? And this is, this is an eye opener for me and it should be for all of us. This is two cents to plant a Kokoni. Two cents. The, in two thousand and ten, the, the, the economic value to this county. In return on a two cent investment is seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. That's, that's what I'm at. That's what, and now fast forward. And this is, this needs, I'll give you all this information. Twenty twenty-three, we have no Kokonis. They're gone. Ask the, not you, ask the fishing game, where are Kokonis are? Ask Robert Keith. Where are Kokonis? Do we have any respeak, repeat spawn Kokoni in Flaming Gorge Reservoir? Zero. In two thousand and three, we had four point three million Kokonis. Guess what that value was worth? That value, just so we all know. In two thousand and three, if we had four point three million repeat Kokoni spawn in Flaming Gorge Reservoir, that brought a three hundred and twenty-two million, five hundred thousand dollar value net. that brought a three hundred and twenty-two million, five hundred thousand dollar value net worth to Sweetwater County. And it's gone. That's why this is important to me to this. This is not nothing to do with us. This is us. Like, if you buy a sportsman's, if you buy a hunting license, a fishing license, this affects every one of us. Not only does it affect our business, but it's going to affect Sweetwater County a hundred percent. And we all, including us, should look into this situation with our D with our fishing Wyoming Fishing Game and start asking questions. There'll be a press release by the newspaper, by the by KSL Outdoors. I think it's this weekend. We done a show with Rob Keith stating this problem. And there's another press release coming out for the newspaper, but it's not nothing to do with the count. It's it's just the it's to do with the fish, the fishery. And that net value to Sweetwater County, and it's gone, and it takes four years to come back.
Tony, Jennifer, we appreciate you getting on the agenda today for bringing this to our attention and and giving us some visuals on the situation. We hope that we can work together a little more amicably in the future. And, uh, you know, again, it is our duty and our job for our constituents to dig into these when they're brought to our attentions. We're doing just that. So we can appreciate your side of it in the future. Just please, you know, be a little more respectful in in the relationship that we would like to establish with you and work through these together. So.
And we act that we ask that respect from you.
Absolutely.
Together as all of us as a community of Sweetwater County to pull together and let's get through this situation.
Certainly.
Because we're not here to inhibit the the public from entering our facility at all.
Okay. Well, thank you both very much. We appreciate your time. Good to continue on commissioners. Do we need a quick break? Phil behinds. We're going to catch up here. Um, next on the agenda is item three, which was the approval of the comment letter for Buckboard Marina Boundary Realignment. Um, I think we all have a pretty good understanding of that now, but we did approve that at our last meeting. Uh, but there was, we kicked it back because we knew the Valdez family would be coming. And go ahead, Eric.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as directed in the last Board of County Commissioner meeting, I did provide a letter. And that's included in your packet. And the gist of that letter is to um, state the motion that was made to uh, object to the issuance of a categorical exclusion in favor of environmental assessment. It also states um that according to CFR regulations, the Code of Federal Regulations, that there was not sufficient time and the information provided. It's been um, very difficult through this process, as Commissioner Richards has stated, just getting the information. Um, not used to that usually dealing with a NEPA process. We get the permits, the applications, and it just, we've received it on a piecemeal basis, and what we're asking for is uh, to initiate an environmental assessment so the public can be involved, and we can also be involved as a cooperator. Uh, also stated in that letter is if the Forest Service does choose to use issue a categorical exclusion to not increase that quarter mile buffer, because if they do increase that area um, according to this uh, to this boundary line realignment, that we ask that that quarter mile do not increase. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. If there's any changes, I just would like to get this letter to the Forest Service this week. And they are patiently awaiting our letter. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments on the letter that Eric drafted? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I I I moved to approve the sending of this letter and and authorize the chairman to sign.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks for your work on that, Eric.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll get that letter to you today to sign.
Uh, next up is also under Eric's realm, a ratification of a subdivision improvement agreement extension for the Lagoon subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So um, we're asking for another extension of the subdivision improvements agreement. We're waiting for final acceptance from the city of Rock Springs and the Water and Sewer District. Uh, I believe all the power is in. We did extend it another four months. Um, due to the timeframe of the expiration, we had the chairman sign, so we're just asking to ratify this. Uh, we should have everything wrapped up by the end of this summer. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Questions on the agreement extension commissioners? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the ratification of the subdivision improvements agreement extension for the Lagoon Road subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
And a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, under tab C on the action presentation items is item number five. Requesting assistance with relocating the Sweetwater County University Wyoming Extension Office. We've got Marty Henry here, the four H educator, and I believe the county coordinator, Bridger. Welcome. Good morning.
Morning.
A little more entertaining than you're used to for this Tuesday morning.
Yeah. That's usually me in that position. Chairman, last commissioners, uh, it's good to be here. I'm Bridger Faith. I'm the Associate Director of Extension uh, for the state. So um, I've had a chance to visit with some of you about really improving, you know, the the relationship with the county and 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 improving the program overall and really having a vibrant program to serve now Sweetwater County. Um, and I think we've made some progress on that. We've talked about, you know, our uh, our desire to have a a position as the Community Vitality and Health Educator. Uh, start here. It's a it's a way that, you know, we certainly can help contribute more to the to the program through the university as we cover all of that salary for that position. And I and I think we've provided all of the all of the financial details that we were requested um, to try and, you know, strengthen this relationship. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where uh, Western uh, had need of our space. Um, and you know, they have aspirations and they're growing. So great for Western. We're we're thrilled for them, but it's it's put us in a bind in terms of the space that they were able to provide us there on campus. Really, we'll take a step back from creating a vibrant program and really stretch us to be able to to meet the needs of the of the community, even at the level that we we've been meeting those needs. So it's, you know, it's a it's a it's definitely a restriction in in how well we'll be able to do that. So um, to help in terms of, you know, we started this conversation. I've had uh, conversation with some of you in terms of this process and if there would be facilities um, that we could move into in terms of the county. I did put together, I didn't have a chance to get it to you before the meeting, but I'll get it to you afterwards. You know, certainly along the lines of of some of that financial disclosure too. Um, I put together just a background in terms of where we're located and how we're located in other counties in Wyoming, just to give you a background in terms of of that as well. So you know, all twenty-three counties have extension offices. Um, three Wyoming counties actually have two offices. So Park, Lincoln, and Fremont all have two offices, you know, uh, that they split amongst their communities. Um, so we have twenty-six total offices. Twenty-two of those are county facilities. So most of our, most of our offices are located in county facilities. Four of them, including Sweetwater, would be separate. Uh, Teton, uh, they have the best sort of uh, scenario, uh, building, land, a building was donated to the four H Council in Teton County. So we would all wish we could have that. Um, but that's the only one uh, that has that. Um, Sheridan and Laramie County both have extension facilities co-located with other UW entities. So one's on the L triple C campus and one is on Sheridan College, but they're UW entities that they're co-located. And then Sweetwater, you know, we're currently in Western, but but definitely a a different situation than the the bulk of the other counties. So I guess with that background, we're here to, we're here to, because we want to keep growing this program uh, and growing this relationship and we're and it's going to be a struggle in the current uh, facility that that Western Wyoming's able to provide for us.
So I haven't been in on all the conversations. Do you guys have a specific site, area, facility you're considering for this relocation or?
Well, we've had, I guess we've had a few conversations with commissioners in terms of potential sites. Uh, one of them, I guess one potential was the the senior where the senior center is located. I realize that there may be other entities that are going into there. We wouldn't um, we can certainly share, you know, we're willing to share, we're willing to uh, so and then at the meet and greet of the commissioners in Rock Springs a couple of months ago, you know, I I heard you talk about combining some other county facilities too. So we just saw it as an opportunity to start that conversation to see if there were an opportunity to get us into a county facility. The other thing that's interesting, you know, and I think one of the reasons counties that the bulk of our offices are in those facilities is, you know, and the way the MOUs are written, you guys are are paying our rent at Western. So in a way, it's, you know, I mean, it's in your best interest too, to have us in in a location where the funds that you're providing to build extension in your community really can go to building extension and not necessarily going to support Western. So.
Mr. Shampill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've had multiple conversations um, about this specifically, and have you had the opportunity to talk to Gene Legursky at all yet?
I have not spoken to him directly. I think Commissioner Slaughter has spoken to him a little bit.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could answer that question to Commissioner.
Commissioner Slaughter.
Um, yes, after meeting with the UW extension um, participants, um, I contacted Gary McLean and Gene Legursky and told them of the interest that had been expressed. We talked about potentially the west end of the Roosevelt School Building. We talked about several other potential buildings. And I even reached out to the city of Green River about some potential within their building. I have not heard back from them, and I've not heard back from Gene Legursky on what he has come up with with those other um, potential um, opportunities that that may we may have in other county buildings. So the the parties have been at least let know of of the interest and are looking into this.
Right. And I I realize that we're pushing this you know, in a sort of a we certainly didn't have a lot of notification in terms of when we were going to be moving at Western, and so that's why we didn't give you as much notification to be able to make this planning process a little more smooth. So.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, do you have plan, like, what is your plan for the interim until we find something?
Our plan for the interim is to cram ourselves in the space provided at Western for a temporary basis until we can find something. But yeah, it it will really it will really hobble us in terms of our ability to serve the the community when we're in the
Absolutely.
We're just small little like professor offices, and we have to have kids and youth come and sign up and those sorts of things, and it just just doesn't work. So.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we have the opportunity to potentially get, and and I'm willing to, Rob, if you want to as well, to to kind of be the in between and the liaison to work with them to to meet with Gene to see if there's options, what those best options might look like, and then bring it back to the commission to to actually make an approval. I I'm sure that you guys need to see the spaces to make a determination about what would be best for you, um, things like that as well. And I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, if there's a couple of offices with the conference room somewhere. Um, I I don't think the events complex has room, but just thinking about the, yeah, they're bursting at the seams, but thinking about that, I'm like, gosh, it would be so awesome if you guys could fit out there. But um, I I do think it makes sense, as you stated, we had discussion about this over the past five years, four years, um, and even before then, that it does make sense that if the county is paying for your rent, that we potentially utilize space that's already unused within the county because it's open and it's not being utilized already. So.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, have you always been at the college?
Last um, forty years.
Yeah, I think, well, I've been with UW for twenty years now, and you've you've always been at the college since then. So it's been a long time. But, you know, Western was small and growing, and they had plenty of space at one point that we were occupied. So.
Mr. Chairman. Can you give us a an idea what kind of square footage your 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 actual needs are?
You know?
No, um. No, I don't.
We're moving into four ten by ten offices. So that's four hundred square feet. We would, we probably need a minimum of a thousand to
Wow.
There are other, we have other wants that we're willing to share with you in terms of best ways to serve it to serve the community, like some of our, some of our education serves low uh, income uh, folks in terms of teaching them how to prepare food properly. And so a kitchen space is is always high on our list to be able to to do those sorts of things, storage space, those sorts of things. So we have, we can provide a sort of a what our absolute bare minimum needs are as well as wants to be able to grow the program and best serve the community too.
Mr. Chairman. If I could address that also. In in the discussions that I had with Mr. Legursky and Mr. McLean with respect to this, what we had gathered was that they needed four office spaces, a conference room, and so a minimum of a thousand square foot, but what they would like to have two thousand square feet. So that was the direction that was given to them, along with the question that I had for the city administrator of Green River when we were talking about it.
It's a little bigger than Commissioner Tom's office.
Slightly. Almost. I mean, Commissioner Tom's office is pretty big.
Uh, well, it sounds like we'll have Commissioner Shane Field and Slaughter get together with our Public Works Director and see if we can come up with some solutions for you guys. Obviously, you know, it's going to be kind of difficult for you over the next you know, month or so, but I don't think there's much we can do in two days' time, unfortunately. So we'll continue to see if there's some avenues that will work for you, and it sounds like these two will be in contact with you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tom.
I don't know if there'd be anything like this available, but maybe even a modular if you could put at the fairgrounds, because ideally it should be at the fairgrounds, you know, I think.
Yeah.
To serve the the group that you're serving anyway.
I would say, so I looked through that, and I'll have, I have this list. You can see where each of them are located in about maybe thirty, forty percent of our extension offices are built are on the fairgrounds, and some of them are just nearby.
And a modular, if we could find one that's available, it's not in use, it could easily provide a thousand square feet or more, probably closer to twelve hundred square feet. And could be put on maybe one end or the other of that uh, campground.
Mr. Chairman, I I'm happy to visit with Candy about what their resources are, what any potential could be out there.
Sounds like we'll start chipping away at it and see if we can't come up with some solutions for you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here today.
We'll be in touch.
I know timing is critical with the fair coming up and all the interactions.
It'll be a challenging summer, but but we'll make it through as long as I mean, I think it's it's most important that that we get this relationship growing and and uh, provide a vibrant program for the community. So.
Thanks, Marty.
Do I want to leave this with?
Yeah, please.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, we're almost there. Does that be enough? You want to tell us the ground fifteen minutes?
Yeah. Could you wait a minute? I want to catch you guys out there.
Should be able to get through this other stuff.
Yeah. Bridger, could you wait a second? I want to talk to you guys, but we got to finish a couple of things.
Uh, next, under the action presentation items, we've got item number six, permission to transfer the use of a looks like Engine Forty-One to Wamset or Fire Department. We've got Jim Zimmerman here this morning with us, the fire warden. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, commissioners. What I have before you today is the permission for us to transfer E forty-one, which is a nineteen ninety deuce and a half from the shop over there. It's the last piece of fire equipment that we have over there outside of a command, an old command vehicle that might go into the uh, the being able to be parted out or whatever. So it's the last piece of equipment. What had happened was the previous fire warden had ordered a foam suppression system that had a remote on it to be placed on the front of this deuce and a half. And uh, it didn't come in until late in the season. And so it was installed by Phil and the and the crew over there at the shop. And so now it's ready. And I certainly don't want that to sit over there through another fire season. So Wamset has stepped up and asked for that. It also holds eight hundred gallons of water, uh, which would be very helpful for Wamset. So I do have uh, the Assistant Fire Chief Jesus Tahio here. Fire Chief Jesus Tahio here, and he can answer any questions that you might have concerning this, but it's just a simple. Transfer so it can be used in the during the fire season. This year in Walmsetter, one of our cooperating agencies. Open to any questions.
Questions, Commissioners. That was just because I'm new and I don't know, how was that? I mean, with the transition of Green River and Walmsetter, and I know we. Pushed some of that equipment out, that how did we track that? Was that, you know, a reduction in their contract? I mean, how how does that work exactly?
Yes. Chairman, Commissioners, um, Jesus with Walmsetter Fire. That we're, you know, as you may know, we are doing the contract, and that is. Units and. Equipment are provided to us, but it's not taken off of the contract. We do have to pay for all the maintenance needed, or, you know, if something breaks, we do. Pay for it, except if it's a major repair, then we might have to bring it back to the. County, but.
But, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tom.
The main point is that they don't charge us for that, whereas if they're using like Fire District One, if they use their. Equipment, they charge us for the use of the equipment, whereas if they're using our equipment, we don't get a charge.
Right, the equipment is still the county's. And so they're used out in 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 our county region, and if they, if the cooperating agencies use. The equipment, we're not charged for that.
Okay. Is that specified in the contract? I think there it lists out equipment, so is that something we would have to amend? Is the reason I'm asking, just so that it's covered in there, or?
No, it's covered.
We talked about that.
I'm pretty sure.
Sounds like we're covered there. Any questions, comments, Commissioners?
Are you happy? With the agreement?
Uh, yes, we are happy, you know, we keep improving and. With all of all of the equipment that's been given to us by the county, we've been, you know, we've been doing more than great, I think.
Have you found a facility to to store your uh fire? Have you checked with uh Williams on that new facility, that BP building and stuff? If they might have a building you could use for a fire station?
Um, I have not, no, but we are looking for a new facility where we can store the fire units. Um, right now, we're leasing, we're paying about ten thousand dollars for a building for us to store the units, but. Um, we're still looking for.
Well, Williams is a big player in that area. You might see if they could donate you something.
Yes, because I I am aware they have a few buildings, shops that, but yes, that would be something to look. Forward, you know, see if I can. Get a hold of them and see where we go with that.
I've got a contact if you need it.
Okay, yes, I would.
They presented at our last meeting, but I've got the phone number.
Okay, yes, I'll take.
Any other comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I I I moved to approve the trans, moved to approve to transfer the use of E forty one to the Walmsetter Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that.
Got a motion to approve the transfer by Commissioner Richards. We've got a second by Commissioner Toman, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next up on the agenda is item seven. We do have the Board of Equalization Attorney Engagement Letter. We've got Clerk Lane here with us. And welcome back. It's good to see your smiling face.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It was a little bit a longer extended trip than I had planned. Um. So every year when we have appeals for the Board of Equalization, we are required to. Um, hire an attorney, um, as our county attorney's office represents in Sweetwater County, um, the assessor's office, so. On behalf of the Board of Equalization, um, I look for attorneys that are. Skilled in Board of Equalization Matters. And we do have a returning one that I would like to present to continue with us, Mr. Mark Harris from Evanston. He has helped us the last few years. He's done a wonderful job. Um, he has requested, he was at a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. Um, for the last two years, and this year his proposal is one hundred and ninety to go up ten dollars, so. That is in the letter of engagement that um I have presented, um, if it is so approved.
Any questions on the letter of engagement, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Shanefield.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of engagement um for Mark Harris um with the hourly rate of a hundred and ninety dollars.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Shanefield. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
And authorize Chairman to sign, sorry, it's just you. Sorry.
Second with that. Second by Commissioner Tillman, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Cindy. Looks like you're staying up there. Next on the agenda is a motion to approve a catering permit for Mans Face Liquors Incorporated. Subject to obtaining all required municipal approvals. This authorization is for an off-premise catering permit. Permit in reference to State Statute twelve four five oh two B. And it was brought to our attention this morning that the city of Green River had their meeting last night, uh, rather than tonight, and they did approve both accordingly. So I'll hand it over to Cindy.
Okay, so as you stated, um, this is an application for a catering permit for a wedding. That it's W A I T E, Wait Hunt Wedding, two twenty nine Old Stoffer Road on six seventeen. Um, they would like a one-day permit to serve alcohol under. The uh Mans Face Liquor. At their wedding, and I do have the. Email from the city of Green River stating that it was approved.
Questions on the catering permit, Commissioners? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve. A catering per- permit for Mans Face Liquors. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That brings us right up to break. We are ten minutes behind, but let's go ahead and take a ten-minute break after that long morning, and we'll resume at ten. Or, excuse me, eleven twenty-five.
All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We're out of break. Where we left off was item number 10, the award of the contract for the Sweetwater County Juvenile Needs Assessment Project. And we've got Christina Marshall here with us this morning. And I believe she's being bashful.
Well, it's okay. Karen Kelly.
Karen Kelly, well.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm here with Karen Kelly, who is the juvenile probation director, as well as she is the chairman or chairperson of the Community Juvenile Services Board. So, with that, Sweetwater County was previously awarded CJSB funding of about $125,000. And part of that is designated to conduct a juvenile needs assessment. The overarching priorities of the needs assessment is to examine local systems, processes regarding, one, the early identification and diversion of children at risk of entry into the juvenile court system. And the second is to prevent juvenile delinquency. So, the final report of this assessment will identify community deficiencies, gaps in our needs, and will assist with determining future funding priorities with CJSB funding and perhaps other funding. So, for this project, for the needs assessment, we took the following steps. One, I advertised a public notice, RFP, on three different dates to align with the county's purchasing policies. Second, we accepted proposals until 5:00 PM on May 5th. And finally, we reviewed the proposals. There was a committee of three people comprised of myself, Karen Kelly, and Marty Dernovich, the purchasing director. So, the committee received one qualified proposal from Corona Insights for a total cost of $50,000. Some final notes on my end. Staff does recommend awarding to Corona Insights. They were within the approved project budget, and that was $50,000. I would like to point out in the contract that is in your packet, there's some special language on page one of the contract with Corona. So, again, page one, section 5B. I have noted to exclude thank you incentives for interview participants employed by Sweetwater County and representatives currently serving on the Community Juvenile Services Board, as described on page 10 of Attachment A, which is their proposal. We had some concern that that would look like some type of kickback, even though they're gift cards. That is actually a very common practice with needs assessment. I just want to point out Corona didn't do anything wrong. A lot of times, like if you're doing a needs assessment for low-income people, to incentivize them to come to a meeting to get their input, they get a little token of appreciation. But just to be transparent and plain, that was added into this contract. So, the final product will be presented to you all, if you don't mind. The contract expires on October 31st of this year, if you approve it. And then finally, you may start hearing, and I think maybe Commissioner Schoenfield, you've heard about CJSB, maybe Commissioner Bowman's. So, this understate statutes 14-9106, that is titled Children, juveniles, and the topic of juveniles is a big issue in Wyoming about keeping them local funding, et cetera. Karen's actually the expert on that. So, I'll let her talk in a second. But on your attachments, I just want to be clear, you had the combined average tabulation of the three reviewers. You have the RFP with the project specifications. The first page talks about those deliverables. You have the proposal from Corona. You have the contract that I'm proposing that you approve. And then finally, for your education, because I had to put that forth for you to educate you, you have what's called the Sweetwater County Juvenile Justice System. This is a very complex flow chart that basically follows, if you're a juvenile, do something naughty, what happens when you enter the system? So, just for your reference. But anyhow, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, Karen is your appointee on this Community Juvenile Services Board and the expert with juveniles in Sweetwater County.
Very good. Thanks for the information, background on that. Any questions, Commissioners? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to award the Sweetwater County Juvenile Needs Assessment Project to Corona Insights and authorize the chairman to sign.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks for seeing it. Thanks, Karen. Appreciate it. Look forward to it. Next up, we do have item 11, the award of the fiscal year 23 Paint Striping Project. We've got our new Assistant Public Works Director, Mr. Andy Hooton, here. And morning, sir.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. So, before you is our annual paint striping contract, similar to what Brandt Lyman spoke about previously. You'll notice that we were a little bitter on the project by roughly 6% as outlined in that letter. So, but this is all paid for out of fuel tax. We don't feel that the bid was absorbent and recommend award.
Questions, Commissioners? Looked like an increase in glass and paint and
Glass went up this year more than we expected as well. So, pretty common.
Comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schoenfield.
Make a motion to approve the Sweetwater County 2023 Paint Striping Project to SNL Industrial for the total bid of $413,601.20. And authorize chairman to sign.
Thanks, Commissioner. We do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Schoenfield. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Action's unanimous. Getting off easy today. Thanks, Andy. Next is item 12, Resolution 2306 PR01. Provide public camping within Pioneer Trails picnic grounds. Mentioned on there is Mr. DeLeon, Deputy County Attorney. What, John?
You have before you Resolution 2306 PR01, which is the resolution providing for group camping. And it also provides for the management components related to the parks. Remember, back in March, March 21st, you, as a board, authorized staff to advertise the notice of intent for this particular resolution. This comes about in part because the Boy Scouts approached you as a board, asking you to take a look into group camping for youth. Public Works Director Jean Legursky and Commissioner Slaughter and Commissioner Richards got together with the Boy Scouts, kind of troubleshooted the different components of a resolution, trying to see how that could be provided. And this resolution is the result of those conversations and those meetings. This resolution identifies that there are 11 parks that are owned by the county. And one park in particular, Pioneer Trails picnic ground, because of its location near the Green River, and because of it having pavilions, was suitable for group camping. And as a result, the the group that got together wanted to put on some restrictions and some requirements for group camping. First of all, the group camping would be for people, for more than 10 people. That would be the definition of a group. The damage deposit was contemplated in the amount of $500. And that would be, again, it would be returned if there was no damage. There would be a fee that was identified, a fee in the amount of $300 per stay. The limit of that stay would be three nights, a maximum of three nights. Any individuals participating in group counseling would be required to have insurance. That is the same insurance requirements that are required anytime somebody fills out a facility use agreement for any county building, any county land that is used. In addition, there was, the resolution provides that, in addition to the three consecutive overnight maximum, it provides for a maximum of 100 people. Those 100 people would be camping overnight in the designated camping area. And as far as fire restrictions that were put in place on this resolution, the requirement is that anybody that participates in group camping will abide by BLM fire restrictions that are in place at the time, that they will not gather any firewood out at the park, that they will bring their own their own fuel to the facility. And they will use the designated fire ring that is out at the location. And lastly, the resolution provides that any participants will abide by the Civil Rights Act of 1964. So, that is the resolution. It is ready for you to have discussion, to make a decision after it being opened up to the public. There was one comment that was received that Mr. Legursky received from April Ecker, who is a Leave No Trace master educator. I wanted to be able to, when that's appropriate, be able to give those comments to the board.
Questions, comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things to note is this is a one-year plan to see how it works out. At the end of that one year, probably after the summer, because that'll, that'll give us the chance to see how it works. We can determine if that $300 is suitable, if it should be more, if it should be less. I was really disappointed in Ms. Ecker's comments because she was in the room with us discussing all of these things and never said a word about her concerns. As me and Commissioner Slaughter and Jean and the Scouts discussed, the terms we came up with in this resolution, 300 was determined the best starting point because of what it costs our staff to go out there and prep for one of these, to go out and pick up the garbage after one of these, to check on them. And 300 was about a break-even point for our, for our staff. The $500 deposit is pretty typical of our facility uses. So, I think everything we're asking here is fair. Boy Scouts of America, their official position is they support this resolution. They think the $300, while it is steep, they think it's fair because we're also going to provide the bathroom services, something that they've had to provide on their own in the past. So, this saves them about $150. So, really, it's, it's just an extra cost of 150 to them. We did it the way we did for all groups, because this is a land patent that requires us to meet civil requirements for equal access. We couldn't just say we're only going to do it for youth groups because that's age discrimination. We needed to make it available to everybody. But at the same time, we didn't want to open up our campgrounds to long-term transient camping either. We have a lot of projects coming. We kind of have a lot of need for housing, and we didn't want our parks to to be what fills that need, and a higher price helps solve that. So, I recommend, and everybody voting for this resolution, give it the year to test, and we'll readdress it next, next winter and see, see if it's working for us. So, then, Mr. Chairman, I'd move, move the approval of, what's our number here? Oh.
We need a public hearing on the resolution? We do. Okay.
I'll come back to that motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schoenfield.
I just wanted to make the comment of thank you for taking the time, both Commissioner Slaughter and Commissioner Richards, to work through this with the Scouts and our staff, and giving them the opportunity to do this and the option to do this while still protecting our staff and the work that we're putting in and the park and everything else. So, I think that this is, this is what my goal was when I said, please, come back, figure this out, work it out, you know? And I'm very excited with what you guys brought back, and I just wanted to say thanks because we need to do more of this across the county to support those groups and yet still be able to maintain what we're doing.
Yeah, well said. I would echo that. I appreciate you guys' time you put into it. It was a lot bigger issue than I realized. I served on the rec board, and I remember dealing with some of that stuff. But in going through this, this ample process has been kind of unique in that regard. So, I too was a little bit confused when we received the feedback. That sounds like John's probably going to read in. Because it felt like both parties walked away happy. So, anyway, that being said, I appreciate you guys' time. And go ahead, Commissioner Slaughter.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, you know, when, when this was originally brought before us, you know, there was a feeling that no was going to be the answer. And I felt we had an obligation to try and find some way to say yes to something of this nature. So, that was the reason, you know, I felt like it was important to spearhead cooperative group with the Boy Scouts and with our Public Works Department to try and facilitate this. I don't think it's a perfect agreement, but as Commissioner Richard stated, you know, it is only for one year. It gives us an opportunity to try this, and we are at least able to say yes by doing this. So, I too would recommend that we pass this.
Very good. Any other comments? If not, I guess we will go ahead and open up a public hearing for Resolution 2306 PR01 to provide public camping within the Pioneer Trails picnic grounds. And at this time, although once again, it doesn't appear that anyone's online or in the audience to speak to this, but this would be the appropriate. And while we're waiting, I believe Mr. DeLeon has a letter, an email that he would like to read in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is, again, this is from April Ecker, the Leave No Trace master educator. She provided an email to Public Works Director Jean Legursky. In that email, or in that letter, she identified that she appreciated the commission finding a way for the youth to participate in group counseling. She did express some comments in terms and concerns in terms of the fact that there would be, that there are cattle that are in the area, that cattle, that, that folks that have cattle in the area don't particularly, don't submit any payments, and that they also can damage the property out there. She identified that she had a concern about the reservation component that is part of this land. There's a, there's a requirement that, there's a reservation that requires that the, that the original owner be able to use the property if, if they choose. And so, she had, she expressed a concern on that reservation. She expressed concern that the, that when somebody does participate in group counseling, that the park itself isn't closed to the public in general. So, she wanted to express that point. She wanted to reiterate that a lot of the groups that will be participating in the camping are nonprofit organizations that don't have a lot of money, and that they try to be good stewards of the land and the property, and that they would essentially do their due diligence in leaving zero footprint on the property. She had two specific questions. She, she asked if she rents the park for a youth group, and somebody else damages the property. somebody else damages the property, would they be charged? She also had a question that was related to if they clean up the property well, then would that eliminate the need for the county to have to go and pick up the following day? In addition to those questions, the, I think the primary crux of Ms. Ecker's comments were related to the deposit, which would be returned, and then the use fee. She specifically recommended, instead of the $500 and $300, $500 deposit and the $300 use fee, she recommended a $50 fee, refundable deposit fee. She recommended $30 per night for groups under 50, $50 per night for groups under 70, $80 per night for groups up to 85, and $100 per night for groups under 100. And so, those are the comments that Ms. Ecker provided and for your consideration.
Thanks, John. Are there any other comments in this public hearing on Resolution 2306 PR01, either in the audience or online at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would just comment that it's hard to rent half a porta potty in reference to her fee charges. And the issue with the cattle, there are four cattle operators in that area. And when the river is at low levels, it's impossible to keep them out of there. It is a fenced-out state, and at some point, the county might have to consider fencing that river area to keep them out of there.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2306 PR01 to provide public camping within the Pioneer Trails picnic grounds.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
I'd like to make that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfeld. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks for everyone's work on that. Next up, these will be pretty quick. I don't know that they're totally necessary, but in an act of transparency, I felt like I'd bring them before for ratification. Events Complex reached out to ask if I'd submit a welcome letter for their Airstream Rally newsletter that they send out. So, that is up for ratification, and I would ask if there's any questions on that. If not, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schoenfeld.
I'll make a motion to ratify the Sweetwater County Welcome Letter for the Airstream Rally.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Schoenfeld. We have a second.
I would second that, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are such a great writer. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. We do have a second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. The final item for today is ratifying a letter of support for the City of Rock Springs for their USDA Urban and Community Forestry Grant application. If there's not any questions on that, I would entertain a motion for approval. Ratification, excuse me. Motion by Commissioner Schoenfeld.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. A little bit behind there, but we made up some time. We do have an executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and legal. It is anticipated that action will be taken upon coming out. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive. Motion by Commissioner Schoenfeld. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? We're now in executive.
He said as soon as possible. The governor's hoping to make appointments as soon as possible.